Okay, good evening. This is the August 19th, 2021 meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The time is six o'clock. We will convene into work session where Mary Peron Boswell and Matt Steer will be leading the review of the cases, and then we'll reconvene promptly at 6:30. So I guess item two on the agenda is to convene into the work session, items two and three. I guess we'll start with the roll call this evening. I'm Edmund Haas, Chair of Planning and Zoning Commission. Is Vice Chair Glenn Portman out there virtually?
I don't think so.
Okay. Commission members Sue Blankenship.
Here.
Cindy Bishop.
Here.
Freddie Guerin.
Here.
Ed Mar.
Here.
And Jim Walker.
Here.
Very good. How do you, Jim, how are you?
I'm fine, sorry I can't hear you in person, y'all.
It's okay, it's all good. Okay, so I'll turn the work session over to Mary Peron Boswell, and you could introduce staff and cases.
Okay, so staff members tonight, myself, Mary Peron Boswell, I believe Mike Garza, Assistant Director of Public Works should be joining us shortly, Cole Baker with Engineering is here as well, Kayla McGee, Planning Secretary, Julian, and we've got Matt Steer here. Okay, so in terms of regular work session, we have three items on the agenda this evening. The first item is the PD for what used to be Doggy Wonderland. They're looking to convert that piece of property into a chess club and learning center, so essentially tutoring for young children. The building itself, nothing's been changed on the exterior. What they are looking to do is to update the PD, there's also a plat involved, and that's the next item on the agenda. But essentially, this piece of property has undergone several reiterations through the years. It started out as a daycare center back in the eighties and nineties, I think through 2004, then it changed over to Doggy Wonderland, essentially. Doggy Wonderland did an expansion with their outside play area. They were looking to do another expansion in 2009, they got approved, but they never did it. And then, if you recall, if you were here about three years ago, in February 2018, they came through, they wanted to do a new facility on Lot 5, which is the vacant piece of property to the north of Doggy Wonderland. They were gonna build a dog rescue center, pet bakery, and pet wash. So we went through all that process. Then they came back several months later and decided, well, maybe we'll build a new Doggy Wonderland on the new property and then put the pet rescue on the other existing Doggy Wonderland. So we went through that process, the lots were platted, but it never came through. So in this iteration now, we're looking at a replat, so essentially going back to the original lot lines almost for the Doggy Wonderland. So what they're gonna do is convert that into a chess club facility and tutoring. On the plans, I think that went out to everybody in the rear. So with this change in use, not only did it require the PD, it also required additional parking spaces that they needed to add. So they're adding about nine parking spaces to the north of the existing building. A lot of that dog fencing and playground equipment is gonna come out, they're gonna plant grass, plant trees, so really that area will look really nice. The plans that came out to you showed that in kind of like the 11th hour, we had discussion because they wanted to keep the basketball court that's existing back there. And so we're like, okay, show some plans, and then we'll bring it forward, we'll see it at Kenzie. So right now, with the plans that you guys have, it's 42% landscaped. They provided plans earlier today that showed that basketball net staying, so kind of tweak the landscape plan a little bit. It's still, I think, excuse me, 39% landscaped, which is above and beyond what's required. So staff was fine with that, with that change, and I apologize that we weren't able to get that out to you sooner, but you'll see, it's really a square, 25x20 square at the top right of the property, and it doesn't interfere with the parking that they have, or anything. For Lot 5, which is the vacant lot, there's nothing planned for it, there's a concept plan shown on it, and that's just to show that that lot is able to be developed at some point in time with the lot line changes that people are proposing for it.
Got a question on the parking, I see the parking at 1 to 200.
Yeah.
So 1 to 100 is retail, 1 to 300 is office.
1 to 100 is restaurant.
Restaurant, yeah. So 1 to 200, I'm trying to think what other uses.
1 to 200, retail.
Retail.
Retail or service.
Yeah.
Okay.
So their hours of operation are 9 to 9, 7 days a week, but their main concentration of people there would be from 3 to 9, maybe the Friday.
It's like bright yellow on it, still gonna stay?
Bright yellow.
Didn't it start out as bright yellow?
Yeah, it was yellow and blue.
A long time ago.
Long time, yeah.
The Sterling, is that the Sterling again?
Yeah, I think what's out there now is green.
Yeah.
Like a hundred green. Yeah.
So the building's hundred green, but the pavilion in the daycare is, or in the yard is yellow.
Yeah, I think a lot of the stuff is coming out, so should be taken care of.
So there'll be no signs at all, it'll just be building?
So any signs, they'll probably change the sign, but they don't have a sign plan, so any signs will have to comply with ordinance requirements, which they are.
And I wasn't sure from the site plan, does Lot 5 is the one to the north, right?
It's the vacant one.
Right, so can you ask, will you be able to access Lot 4 R where Doggy Wonderland is now from Van Bever?
No.
Okay.
So they're keeping the screening wall that's there in place. The only change that we're looking to do is they're gonna have a shared dumpster agreement, which was approved, you know, the concept was approved with the previous PD, so they've submitted a dumpster agreement because now there's gonna be different owners of the properties. So we're gonna have them provide an access point for the other lots to access the dumpster, which will be on Lot 4.
Yeah. So what do y'all think? I'm concerned about parents picking up and dropping off their kids at the same time, like let's say five or six o'clock, and you've got traffic on Bethel School right there, which backs up from the traffic light. It seems like a very congested, it'll be a very congested parking lot. So did you guys look at that, or what do you guys think about that?
Well, you know, originally, they had talked about providing a through drive. They opted not to do it, and so previously, previous iterations of this, there was some concern of if that was through, that they would cause cut-through traffic. And so, you know, even today, people are more concerned about, I think, speeding along Van Bever. And then, but in terms of dropping off and picking up, I don't think there'd be an issue.
What's the occupancy?
I don't know that information.
Oh, yeah, well, the applicant can tell us, what is the typical day gonna look like? Are they, is there turnover, like you come in for an hour, team practice, club practice, I don't know, and then what that looks like? Because then that might go to your point on queuing and things, but it's 3 to 9, and so most of the traffic is gonna be eastbound, so it'll be northbound Dentap and then eastbound Bethel getting into the residential area, so.
Sort of like they're called.
Bethel School?
Yeah.
Yes, just a little side note, we are increasing capacity at the intersection, we're adding right turn lanes at Bethel School and Dentap, and essentially all directions, so that'll add capacity to the intersection.
Right.
And that's happening now, so they're starting right around Southwestern Parkway, then they're gonna be Sandy Lake, and then Bethel School, and then 121 Dentap.
Good, that'll help some. I'm just still a little concerned, you know, I'm certainly not a traffic or parking lot expert, but some of the areas that I've experienced, but when my son was in classes, you know, when parents dropping off and picking up at the same time and all they have is parking lot, it becomes a giant mess, and people, parents tend not, some parents don't park in the spot like they're supposed to, they're waiting out front, and I can't believe the child hasn't gotten hit in some of these places, with parents coming and going, you know, after work, so.
I think we'll have to, you know, take a look and see how it works, and if there's an issue, then we'll have to get maybe some kind of traffic plan.
Mike, are you concerned about any kind of queuing? I've got 25 spots on site.
Okay, okay.
We're comfortable with what they're showing.
I defer to the experts. Yeah? Just a couple comments, just because I'm looking at the site plan. On the site plan, there's just a couple of scribe areas, I guess, I don't know. Where it's, the portion of that 24-foot fire lane and access easement is supposed to be abandoned on the southern lot?
So the way the lot lines are currently, I think part of the northern lot, I think cuts down, so they're, I think, abandoning part of that and putting it landscaping.
Okay, well, on the site plan, it says abandoned by this plat, which I don't think is accurate.
We can correct that.
Yeah, and then right below it, where the boundary line could be abandoned is, it's misspelled.
Should've caught that.
Weirdly, that's what shows up in my head.
Okay, I thought I was looking at the plat, and I was looking at the site plan. Yeah.
So I don't look at the plat.
The next item is the plat that goes along with it, essentially changing the lot lines to reflect traditional parking third lot 4R. We did receive a couple, one reply letter and one email for this request, but essentially they were looking at traffic along Van Bever and speeding, so we did speak with the police department to go and check that out for them. Then they were also talking about trash at the car wash, and we did send out one environmental health people to go check that out, and there wasn't, didn't seem to be an issue at this point in time of the trash.
All right. So the item number eight this evening is the live work proposal at Heath and Cappell Road. Previously, what was approved was a conceptual, was a conceptual plan for professional office at that corner. So what they're wanting to do is change that, and now they're proposing five live work units, each of which will have 3,000 square feet of air-conditioned space. First floor will be 1,500 square feet of air-conditioned space, and second floor 1,500. And then they've got porches and patios and things of that nature. On the first floor, they're required to have a minimum of 50% of that space devoted towards their workspace, so that equates to 1,500 square feet total possibility of workspace, and then the second floor, of course, will be a living unit. They're proposing zero lot lines, which means one side yard setback would be one foot and the other side yard setback would be seven feet, and that's typically the way, zero lot lines are done. I'll walk you through the way that looks on the exhibit out there. They're proposing private drainage, utility maintenance, and access easement between the units, so you can get from the parking area in the back to the front door, and then that also allows for the ability to maintain the sides of each of the respective units. A lot of emails have come in here recently about the parking, and so I'll go through kind of the neighborhood concerns and the adjacent neighbors' concerns as it relates to the parking they've provided for these five units. But what they're witnessing is what took place on McNear and South Cappell Road, which was recently constructed, the shell buildings were recently constructed, the northernmost building has a chiropractor in it, which is the most intense type of use, and then the southern one, southern building is under construction. So they're witnessing a lot of parties or a lot of events going on, and they're clogging up the parking of that neighborhood. So that's where the majority of the concerns are coming from, is adjacent to that, or that existing plan, or that existing site.
Are they business-related parties, or are they personal-related parties?
Well, so I think, well, I think they're special events for the chiropractor office. So parking on that one is kind of, I don't want to say short, but they do have, they used to have two handicap spaces out front and then two for regular use. So the handicap spaces were eating up the majority of the public parking, so we worked with them to move one of the handicap spaces to the back, so that will free up one of their on-street spaces. That's, again, the northern one that's existing. So I don't want to go into too much detail about that one because we're trying to focus on this one, but we did the parking analysis for this one. They've got 12 parking spaces on Cappell Road, they've got seven in the back, and those are all shared amongst the units, and then behind each of the units, each unit has three spaces, so that's 15 total, and then they each are required to have two parking spaces in the garage, so that's a total of 10 there. So they're providing 44 spaces, and based on, you know, rough calculations, we weren't sure exactly how much space was gonna be devoted on the first floor to their business use, so I put 1,000 square feet as working space, and that would give them about 75% of the air-conditioned area. I think Greg has provided an exhibit that I just read an email from him, he's the architect on the case, and he parked it at the full, you know, 1,500 square feet maximum, just to give us an example of what will be required if they had a maximum medical office, which is the most intense type use, with, at 1,500 feet, and then what would be the maximum if they had a lesser intensity, which would be the professional office, which is parked at 1 for 300 square feet. So I'll go through that, and we can really analyze their parking, but I think, based on, you know, other standards that we have throughout the rest of the city, 1 for 175 should meet their needs, and that's for the most intense. We're not gonna allow a restaurant in any of these units, so that's, I guess, that's the most intense, and this is the second most intense.
They don't have a parking problem at Aspar's, it's a great find, do they? You have one over there. Oh my gosh, that is.
Is that a live work unit?
It's all restaurant now, but next door was a house, it's now the office for Aspar's and that is.
Okay. Well, so they are asking for various exceptions to the zoning ordinance. They're asking for, on the east side, there's a brick wall that's required between a business use and a residential. This is quasi-business, quasi-residential, so we're recommending an eight-foot wood fence be allowed in lieu of that six-foot brick wall. We think that that's gonna provide more screening than a six-foot brick wall. And then on the north side, they're allowed to do the wood fence anyway, but they are asking for an exception on the perimeter areas. So on the east side, normally 10-foot area will be required along the perimeter, they're reducing that to one foot, and that's in order to fit a 24-foot fire lane and access easement through there. We're in support of that because that provides more maneuverability onsite, and it will be easier for people to back out and drive forward out of the drive.
So will you have an image on that, is in the presentation?
Yes, yes.
Is that, that's for each unit?
The 10-foot variance, that's for the entire site. So the way it's laid out is, on the easternmost portion of the site, you have a common area lot where you have the drive aisle, it's kind of like, it looks like a flag lot, and so that'll lead back to the parking, but I'll have an image out there. On the northern portion of the property, they're asking for an exception to the 10-foot requirement because it's kind of at a diagonal, so you have one of the units that comes within five, or close to five feet from that northern property line, but the majority is meeting the 10-foot perimeter area. So we're recommending an exception there as well. Let's see here, so I'll go through the elevations, Greg Frink did the ones to the north, and I don't think anyone really has any concerns about the look of the structures, so staff's definitely impressed by the rendering that he submitted.
It is a little different look than kind of the classic looks that we've had in the Old Town, more of a, kind of an urban feel, not a true urban, but just.
Yeah, well, when you see the true elevations, I don't know that these were actually submitted in the packet, but they are, you know, they're bigger, they're bigger than the darling homes that are found in the Main Street project. But, so anyway, back to the letters that, we sent out 30 notices to surrounding property owners within 200 feet, and then we sent out 99 notices within 800 feet, and then those are as a courtesy. So within the 200 feet directly adjacent to this property, we did get three people in opposition, and I'll go through their opposition in the public hearing, but we've just got a long list of 12 conditions, but the majority of it's just cleanup, cleanup items, so. Any questions on that before we get out there in the big hearing?
So how does the treatment of this development compare to the live work thing to the south? We've talked about the one to the north, right, the one to the south, because I just want to make sure that all the businesses get treated pretty much the same.
Right.
So that the other ones have zero lot lines, or the number of parking is the same, or?
Yeah, well, so the ones to the south, I believe there's maybe 10 spaces, I'm not exactly sure on that number, but there are parking spaces behind that are used by each of the units.
I don't know, they have garages in there, I think they're two cargo garages, I think.
Okay. The applicant actually lives in one of the units, so the applicant lives in one of those units there.
Oh, one of the units that I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Oh.
And is planning to build these and then move into one of these. So he would be a good reference to ask those questions about that particular development and how it works. But in reference to that development, we did require them to build a six-foot masonry wall, and that was approved before the ones to the north were constructed. So the ones to the north, we required an eight-foot wood fence, so we really haven't been consistent on, you know, who we may build the masonry wall. But in my opinion, the masonry wall is a lot harsher, and it's not as compatible for a pedestrian environment where you're trying to make things soft. I think going up the extra two feet is probably better in terms of screening than just having a harsh masonry wall, but we can get into more details out in the public hearing. So any other questions? I'll turn it back over to Mary.
So we've got a couple more minutes here.
So just to kind of go over things I have from that council.
Yeah, that's great.
So the last council meeting, we did a tour of the ordinance for the property at 755 West Main, was the mixed use, Let It Shine, people. Boards and commissions interviews will be October 14th for Planning and Zoning, both Eds, Lynn and Sue are, oh, so I think you should be getting more information on that. I think they decided you can do either in person or Zoom. The last I heard almost changes.
So are you guys all re-upping?
I think so.
We need an answer now.
It was just announced.
And then we have also, we're working on our neighborhood engagement process and programs, so if you have to go on the website, you'll see that there's a new program called Yard of the Month, and so it's for any citizen who's losing Cappell, you can either nominate someone or nominate your own yard, and we have, the city's brought up into six different quadrants, so for this year, we just did August and September, since after that, it kind of gets too cold, so it's kind of our test run.
What's the criteria for Yard of the Month? Is it landscaping, is it the house maintenance, is it, I mean?
Mostly landscaping, so good curb appeal from the, you know, the sidewalk.
Use of native plants or drought-tolerant plants instead of invasive species?
African.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Wow, yeah, seriously.
What's the criteria?
You can nominate, you can nominate anyone.
Yes.
Right, as long as you have their consent.
Right, and the real question is, what's the prize for being Yard of the Month?
Signed.
A signed, a hard?
You get this lovely sign, you get a certificate signed by the mayor, and we've got these nice little trowels that we just got in today.
Cool.
A trowel?
A trowel.
Okay.
Yeah, you put that on your mantle as your, that's like a trophy.
Gold-plated.
Yeah, it's for Yard of the Month trophy.
Okay, you get to keep it, right, or you have to give it back?
Or you have to, you have to pass it along?
Oh, yeah, you get it, write it, etch your name in the hand.
They're really nice.
I think it is awesome.
So those are the only two items?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we got one minute, anyone need a break before we start?
I was gonna ask Mary a quick question, so I know a while back, we had a discussion about fencing, is there any movement on that? Maybe just, I guess it was just the repair of fences, the color of fences, things like that, I think when they were discussing, I guess, are we gonna look into that, or the city was, it was probably about a year ago, but.
So, yeah, Suzanne brought. So, yes, Suzanne brought forward ordinance amendments.
Okay.
In terms of adjacent to the right-of-way, the good side of the fence needs to be out. And then if you have a pool, the good side of the fence needs to be facing out so that people won't climb into your backyard and fall into your pool.
What about on the O and M side? Isn't that what you're after?
The O and M?
The operations, maintenance side of the fence.
You know, like driving down Sandalike, I think we've mentioned this before, just a different coloration of the fence.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah.
Huge offense.
Well, so our code enforcement would handle that. If there's a dilapidated fence, they'd go out and put a door hanger in.
But there's nothing currently about, like, same stain code and all that. Typically, that's an HOE type of thing. We've looked at that as a project, but that hasn't moved forward in our list.
Okay.
Or, you know, actionable item. Yeah. But it's on the list.
It's good enough.
I keep looking at it.
Jim, you still out there? Do you have any questions of staff in the work session?
I don't see him.
I think he disappeared.
A lot of them better go.
All right.
Oh, they're here, huh? Hello?
Now, this is, like, picture keeps changing. This is Donald Walker. You hear me, right?
Yes, yes, sir.
We're not ready for the meeting yet, though, so Donald, so...
I apologize.
So hang on.
I apologize. I'll hang.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys need a break before we start? So it's six-thirty-one.
That's who was asking.
We're meeting in this...
Come in, come in.
You need a minute?
Please, for nature's business.
Mary, wait a minute.
You're drinking this water?
I know.
Julian? Do I need the clicker or can I use my mouse?
So you can use the computer. All right.
Okay. The Planning and Zoning Commission is now convening into regular session. The time is six-thirty-seven. For those that are just arriving, prior to coming up before you, we met in pre-session to review the cases. We're on item four of the agenda. This is the citizens' appearance. Kami, do we have anyone? Citizens' appearances. Persons wishing to speak on any matter other than the item scheduled for a public hearing on the agenda must sign in and register. Presentations by individuals shall be limited to two minutes each. An individual speaker's time may be extended an additional two minutes with the approval of the majority of the commission members present. There should be a cumulative limit of twenty minutes allotted for any regular or special item of a special planning and zoning meeting. The persons who signed up shall be called upon in the order that they have been registered. So we have three folks that have signed up. Asher Ahmed, are you speaking on an item other than what's on the agenda?
I haven't seen the agenda yet.
Yeah, I've just spoken on live-work, right?
Kristy Green, okay. And Randall Engel, okay. That's right, very good, okay. So with that, we'll move on to item five. This is approval of our June seventeenth meeting, the meeting minutes. Any comments by the commission or is there a motion by the commission? Oh, and also, for those of you here in the public, we do have one of our members tonight. Commissioner Walker is online virtually tonight. So, yeah, so, okay. Any, is there any discussion or a motion by the commission on the minutes?
I motion to approve the minutes from June seventeenth Planning and Zoning Meeting.
All right, very good. We have a motion by Commissioner Blankenship. Is there a second?
I second.
Second, Commissioner Guerra. Kami, would you call the roll, please?
Please say aye or nay as I call your name. Chairman Haas.
Aye.
Commissioner Blankenship.
Aye.
Commissioner Guerra.
Aye.
Commissioner Maurer.
Aye.
Commissioner Bishop.
Aye.
Commissioner Walker.
Aye.
Blankenship, Guerra, Haas, Maurer, Bishop, Walker, all approved, none opposed, motion carries.
Item six on the agenda is a public hearing. This is PD dash two-one-seven, R four dash C, the Capel Chess Club. Northlake Woodlands Center Edition, Lot four, four R dash one and five R. Block A zoning change request from Plan Development number two-one-seven, Revision Three Commercial to Plan Development two-one-C, Revision Number Four Commercial, to allow, to approve a conceptual site plan for the vacant Lot five R and a detailed site plan for the conversion of the existing Doggy Wonderland into a chess club and learning center with additional parking spaces proposed on one-point-one-three acres of land located on east, on the east, located east of South Denton Tap Road between Van Bever and East Bethel School Road as requested by the Capel Realty Investment in Ganesan. Sorry if I messed that up. Property owner is being represented by Daniel Parrish of DP Designs and Development. We have a staff presentation by Mary Peron Boswell. Mary?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Brief history on the property located between Van Bever and East Bethel School Road and east of Denton Tap. So Lot four, which is the southern lot, was originally constructed as a La Petite daycare in nineteen eighty-four and converted to another daycare in nineteen ninety-nine, which ran through to two thousand and four. In two thousand and seven, PD two-seventeen dash C was approved to allow for the conversion to a pet daycare boarding and spa on six-point-zero-six, zero-point-six-three-seven acres. The site was renovated and reopened for operation. In two thousand and nine, redevelopment plans requested an eleven-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty-eight square-foot expansion to the pet care outdoor play area located on the vacant property to the north, fronting Van Bever, now known as Lot five. This proposed expansion of the outdoor play area did not occur. In February of two thousand and eighteen, council approved a PD amendment to allow a new building that would have had a kennel, area pet wash, and bakery on the current Lot five. Lot six had a conceptual site plan attached with that proposal as well. That was not built. Later that year, the request was again modified to construct a new Doggy Wonderland on Lot five and convert the existing Doggy Wonderland into the rescue kennel and self-serve pet wash. This plan was not acted upon either. So with this request, the existing Doggy Wonderland, which is the blue building on your screen, is proposed to be converted into a chess club and learning center, offering tutoring for children. The hours of operation are proposed to be nine to nine all through the week with three to nine, Monday to Friday, being their most active period. This change in use requires nine additional parking spaces, which are proposed to be constructed north of the existing building. The existing parking onsite currently on the west side are proposed to remain. And a variance was granted with the previous PD to allow for the existing configuration. A variance was also granted for the side yard setback for the existing building. This new use and site layout for Lot four R will also see the removal of much of the existing fencing and dog playground equipment. This area will be reorganized to include additional parking spaces as well as additional trees and landscaping. The applicant is requesting to leave the existing basketball court in place, which is identified in yellow, which is located on the northeast corner of the site. So I apologize because staff received that updated plan today. And it's shown here on the screen, just east of the parking area, north of the building. Nothing is currently proposed to be constructed on Lot five. But the lot lines for Lot four and five will be amended to reflect the change in the property lines due to the need for, to provide additional parking for Lot four R. Essentially going back to what is on the ground today. A concept plan is shown for Lot five solely to illustrate the possible construction and parking layout in the future. Nothing is proposed to be constructed at this time on Lot five. A detailed site plan will be required for the development of this lot, including any required screening between Lot five and adjacent properties. So in terms of landscaping, all of the existing trees onsite are proposed to remain. The area to the north of the building outside the additional parking area will have grass and additional trees planted. More trees are proposed along the eastern perimeter and at the end of the parking islands. So with the original plan that you received in your packet, this was forty-two percent of the lot is landscaped, exceeding the thirty percent required by ordinance. Earlier today, they provided an updated plan that has the basketball court area remaining. And the site will still be heavily landscaped at thirty-nine percent even with this modification. So all landscaping will be required to be irrigated, and the landscape plan shall be updated to reflect that. In terms of the elevations, no changes are proposed to the exterior elevation. They are, if they are looking to change the sign, there is no sign plan that's attached. So they will have to meet city ordinance requirements. There's an existing masonry wall that screens the eastern perimeter. The screening wraps around the northern portion of Lot four to the western border. And then shrubs line the western border. The concept plan will need to be updated to show a screening wall along Lot five R for any future development. So in terms of, this is a zoning request, so we did send out letters within the required two-hundred feet as required by law. We sent out eighteen letters. In addition, the city of Capel also sends out notices to eight-hundred feet. So we did send out an additional hundred-and-forty-seven letters. We did receive two responses. And those were essentially looking at, they are opposing traffic along Van Bever. So they were looking at people speeding along Van Bever and issues with, you know, perhaps trash at the car wash. So I did call one of the people who responded with their letter. When I kind of went over the project with them, they weren't opposed to the project itself, but more of people speeding along Van Bever. So staff did reach out to the police department to look into that matter related to speeding. We also reached out to our environmental health staff. And they did visit the site to look at the complaints about the trash onsite. So staff is recommending approval of the requested subject to, of the following PD conditions. A replat will be required to subdivide the lots and to provide any necessary easements. They will need to submit a draft dumpster agreement for city attorney to review. This shall be filed with the plat. They have provided staff with this document, and it is being reviewed. All signage shall comply with city ordinance requirements. Number four, they need to revise all plans to reflect the basketball court remaining and update the landscape calculations accordingly. Five, to revise the plans to show the dumpster for the adjoining lots. Sorry, sorry, to show dumpster access to the adjoining lots. And six, to revise the landscape plans to add a note that all required landscaping shall be irrigated. That is the end of my presentation. The applicant is here as well, if you have any questions.
Okay, very good, thank you, Mary. Also in pre-session, one of the commissioners, Commissioner Bishop, raised the question regarding queuing of the proposed site that we want to understand from the applicant, kind of the operation, what are the, what is going to kind of be anticipated in terms of if there's turnover of kids coming out and what that might look like? The general comment from staff was that didn't feel like queuing may be an issue. Got twenty-five onsite parking spots, so that might not be an issue at this time. But I would like to follow up with the applicant on that. Any questions of staff by the commission? Jim, any questions from you?
No, sir.
Okay, very good. Okay, with that, I'll turn it over to the applicant, if the applicant would come forward and, and... If you, we'd like for you to come down. We'll need your name and address for the record and...
Yeah, I am Suresh Ganesan Suryraj. So we are planning to...
Can I get your address for the record, please?
Oh, I live in seven-two-six-eight Ridge Point Drive, Irving, Texas.
Perfect. Okay. So what's, tell us about the chess club.
So the chess club would be like teaching, coaching for chess for kids, right? So we are thinking like for one-hour class for the kids. So like ten to twenty kids is what I'm thinking. thinking. So one hour, and then the next section will come back, come. So we are planning to have it most likely 3:00 PM to 9:00 PM is what we are thinking. And, yeah, so, and then the tournaments are mostly in the weekends. So they, we will have tournaments for the kids. They will be playing against each other. So that is the main thing that we are planning.
What do you see as the size of the group that's going to be in the facility during the one-hour sessions, number of kids?
Yeah, so I'm thinking 10 to 20.
Ten to 20?
Yeah.
Okay, and so I guess my only follow-up question would be if you're having an operation every, every hour, or is there a break in between the hour?
Yeah, so...
There, there'll be 15 minutes break.
And if, if I could get your name and address for the record, sorry.
Nitya, Nitya Marimutu.
Okay, same address, I presume?
Yeah, she's my wife.
Good, good.
We are thinking like a 15 minutes in-between gap, and that's how we are trying to, you know, overlap. So like not everybody come and so like a 15 minutes gap in between the classes.
Okay, okay. And what's the, what's, what would be the capacity load of the, of the...
For the building, I'm not sure.
Number of, yeah, what's the maximum number that you could possibly have in there? I know it's probably a fire thing, but...
I'm not sure. It's 4,900 square feet building. I have to check and find out.
Mike, would you happen to know what that might be?
That would, that would be a fire.
Yeah, okay, okay. It just, the, the questions are in relation to the follow-up question regarding queuing, and any queuing that may back out onto Bethel, and particularly during the PMP hour, there's kind of a, a rush in the afternoon traffic. So I wanted to try to understand that a little better. Any questions of the commission toward the applicant?
Yes, I just had a follow-up question. You mentioned that there's tournaments on the weekends, and so how many kids would come to a tournament, and how long is that?
The tournaments, it depends, like 25 to 30 kids playing, so in this area, right? So they will be playing for maybe three hours, yeah, you know, multiple tournament.
And at these tournaments, do parents stay for those, or do they drop them off?
Mostly, it's a long tournament, so most of the thing that we see, they drop and go, and they will come and pick later. But for the smaller kids, maybe they will tend to stay for the whole tournament.
So you might have 15 or, or 25 or 30 parents parked there at one time?
Fifteen to 20, yeah. So, yeah, 15, yeah, that's what I'm thinking, so.
Okay.
This is the first thing, so I don't know the exact thing, but we are expecting like 15 maybe staying, and the remaining maybe going and coming back.
So what might the plan be if you, if you have a larger tournament along with parents staying? Where might extra parking be? Would folks be parking across in the post office and walking across, or what's, what's kind of the plan here?
I don't know. I don't think we'll be having so many. I don't know if it is good, I mean, if they...
We normally, you know, we used to get a registration beforehand, so if we think like, you know, lot of registration, we normally try to split the time. That's what we are thinking for now, actually, so that it's not too much crowded.
Sure.
Because we are having a website, you know, and they will register it before. If the tournament is on Saturday, we will open it for a week before, so we know like how many of them are planning to attend.
Okay.
And we will get an idea, and if it is more, and we will make sure, you know, we are splitting the sections. Normally, the tournament will go by sections. So if like, we will see like how many of them are there, and like we will, we can put it like under 400, under 800 section in the morning, and the other section in the afternoon. That's how we are planning to decide.
So I'm going to ask Mary and maybe Mike, but would staff have any concerns regarding weekend tournament, parking issues? I mean, it's weekend, so the, the daily traffic's down, but it's just an issue of parking, and if in a shared agreement might be needed with adjacent neighbors?
So I think if, if they are splitting it, they shouldn't have that issue, but if, if there does become a problem, then we'll have to look at some type of either traffic plan or having to make some kind of arrangement.
So how might, how might that occur? Is that because there's some complaints that occur, and that's the way staff would find out, or would staff proactively, with, with the clients, I guess the schedule of the chess club?
Right.
Or take a look every now and then?
Right. I think, you know, if, if that's a concern, we could, you know, add a condition saying, you know, you, you can't have more than so many people within a certain timeframe, or at least provide some gaps so that there's, that, that changeover in parking.
I don't know, I don't know that I'm prepared to put a, a limitation, but I guess from the applicant, I'd like the applicant to share information with staff, just to let them know, hey, we're going to have a tournament, just so we can see how things go. I mean, hopefully this thing takes off, and this is Queen's Gambit Part Two, and it's really successful and all that. And so, but I would, I would ask for the applicant to proactively work with staff, just so we can make sure things operate well there. Any other questions of the applicant? Cindy?
Thank you. Just, just, just to follow up on, on the comments about, about queuing, you know, and I, I've been there when my son was younger, you know. Parents dropping off and picking up at the same time can become, become a giant mess. So I just want to make sure that you're aware of that. And, you know, maybe on these tournaments on the weekends, or same, same thing with classes, you know, we have a nice sidewalk system now. Maybe encourage them to walk or take their, take their bikes and put up a bike rack or something. So just, just, you know, just think about that. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, as it relates to the, the use, so do you plan on using it exclusively for chess, or would, would it be, is there some related chess use or sort of meeting space use?
Yeah, so 75 personnel is what I'm thinking for chess. So we are also doing some, some like tutoring for kids like math and English tutoring to start with, yeah. So, so mostly 75 personnel is chess, is what I'm thinking.
And then a follow-up to that, what are, what are your expectations in terms of the occupancy, number of kids, and as far as the tutoring side of it?
The total occupancy, it's like I was saying, like 20, 25 at the time, but so for an hour. So then it keeps moving on. So that's what I'm thinking.
Okay, great, thank you.
Freddie?
I, I just had one question, just really for plug for your business, but what gave you the idea to do this? And again, there's some audience watching this, but again, why, why started here and, you know, what motivated you?
Yeah, so my kids, I have three kids, they are playing chess, and they are, my son is top 100 in all of US. He is nine-year-old. So, and I know Copel is one good city for, you know, I also moved from Valley Ranch to Copel ISD, so that Copel gives more importance for education system. So I thought Copel Chess Club would be very good because people living here give more importance to education, and so, so...
Yeah, and we are here in the Copel, I mean, like in the, for the chess, he is learning from five-year-old, but for the last four years, we are traveling like 45 minutes to the planner for the tournament. So all the kids traveling. So then we decided like why we, and all the, most of them are like Copel, here Irving, everybody actually. Then we decided why can't, you know, we start one club for our community kids, so that they don't have to, because the tournament itself will go for four hours. And the travel time, 45, 45, it's like, we used to go at eight, and we used to return back by 3:34. So we are thinking like, how can we reduce, but the kids don't get but normally the parent. So we wanted to, you know, as a community, like as a parent, what we feel, that's what everybody, so we decided like Copel is a good place, and we wanted to start here.
I, I did want to follow up, and maybe I missed it when, in the opening remarks. So would you all potentially be hosting a tournament also?
Yes.
So how many games may be going on at any given time?
Four to, four games is what I'm thinking.
Oh, four?
Four rounds.
Four rounds, but is it 10 boards going, 20 boards going?
So 20 kids, 10 boards.
Okay.
Yeah, 20 to 30 kids, like 15 boards.
Because, because you'd probably have your team, then you'd have the visiting team.
Visiting...
Yeah, it's for the whole, actually, it's a UCF rated tournaments, actually. So that's what we normally, you know, go with like a registration process. We will know like how many kids will be participating, and it will not be like, it's not like a one section. It will be like multiple sections. So based on the kids' registration, normally we used to split the, you know, so that it's not, the parking lot is not that much overflowed, actually.
Yeah, I know, there is another thing I want to add is, there are some other national level tournaments where kids come from different states, right? I'm not planning to do that. I, I'm not certified. I am a certified tournament director to keep local only, not national level tournaments. So I, I'm not planning to do those kind of tournaments.
Maybe we will do, but we will go to other places, like, yeah.
Anyway, we, we don't have that much space to have national level tournaments. So it's only for local city kind of.
Hoping, hoping it is successful, but Mary, question, let's just say tournaments are becoming more and more successful. There is, there's home club and visiting club, and we have parking. Parking spills over into the post office. With post office, is there any, would there be any formal requirement needed, or because it's kind of open, it's not necessarily public parking, but I mean, would, would there have to be some kind of, what would that process look like?
So I, I think they own the, you own the north lot, right, like Lot Five?
Yes.
So they do have, they, they do have opportunity to expand parking on the north side?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions of staff? Jim, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Ed.
Mary, quick question. So on Bethel School, can you currently park on either side of, I've seen cars parked there, but is it allowable to park on either side of that road?
No, Bethel School.
No.
I don't know that it's posted, but...
It's not posted, but it's a...
It's a travel lane, yeah.
Okay. I've seen cars there before, not often, but there's, you know, I haven't seen a sign that says it's not, it's not allowed. Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody who'd like, go ahead. You, you can, you can have a seat. Thank you. Is there anybody who'd like to speak for or against the proposed application? Okay, seeing none in the room, is there anybody virtually who has any comments? I don't know how that would work, Kami, just, just chime in, okay? Okay, any other discussion by the commission on this before I close the public hearing? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Any final discussion? Jim, thoughts? Any thoughts from you, Jim?
No, sir, I'm fine. Sounds like a good idea.
I, you know, I, I am totally in favor of the proposed. I think it's going to be great, get some life and activity back there. I would ask, as I mentioned, I don't know that I need it to be a condition of approval, but I would ask that the applicant be proactive in informing staff, hey, we're going to have a, either a tournament or whatever, just so that some observations can be taken care, or can be undertaken, just to see if things are working there and don't, we don't run into a situation. But that would be my only comment. Is there a motion by the commission?
I'd like to make a motion for the approval of item six, PD 217 R4C Capell Chess Club.
Okay, very good. We have a motion by Commissioner Gare. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Maher. Okay, Kami, would you read the roll, please?
Please say iron eye as I call your name. Chairman Haas.
Aye.
Commissioner Blankenship.
Aye.
Commissioner Maurer.
Aye.
Excuse me. Commissioner Guera.
Aye.
Commissioner Bishop.
Aye.
Commissioner Walker.
Aye.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Okay, item... It's item seven. Item seven is a public hearing. This is the North Lake Woodlands Center Edition Lots Four R dash one and Five R Block A. Replat, a replat being of Lot Four R and Five Block A to allow the additional acreage for Lot Four R to construct additional parking for a proposed chess club and learning center in the existing building on 1.13 acres of land located east of South Denton Tap Road between Van Bever Drive and East Bethel School Road at the, as requested by Capell Realty Investment and Ganesan Limited. The property owner is being represented by McAdams, the McAdams Company. Mary Perone Boswell has the staff report. Mary?
So again, this item is the companion item to the item we just looked at. So in 2018, a revised plat created three lots by incorporating the vacant lot to the north, existing car wash site, and the Doggy Wonderland site. The plat established mutual access easements, configured fire lanes, and proposed utility easements to accommodate the proposed building on vacant Lot Five. So this building was never constructed. So this plat is to once again reconfigure the lot lines between Lot Four R and Five, where the Doggy Wonderland facility will be converted into a chess club and learning center, and does require the additional land to construct the nine new parking spaces. So staff is recommending approval of North Lake Woodlands Center Edition Lots Four R one and Five R Block A, subject to the following conditions, that there may be additional comments generated at the time of building permit, that the plat shall not be filed until zoning is approved, and that a shared dumpster agreement will be required to be filed along with the plat.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mary. Any questions of staff by the commission? Okay, this is, would the applicant like, would you like to add anything to the app, the application, this item? Are you in agreement with conditions as presented by staff? I see you nodding yes. Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody who'd like to speak for or against proposed application, both in person and or virtually? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any discussion by the commission? Is there a motion by the commission?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, move to approve North, North Lake Woodlands Center Edition Lots Four R dash one and Five R Block A replat, subject to staff conditions.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Maher. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Blankenship. Kami, would you call the roll, please?
Please say iron eye as I call your name. Chairman Haas.
Aye.
Commissioner Blankenship.
Aye.
Commissioner Guera.
Aye.
Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Maurer.
Aye.
Commissioner Bishop.
Aye.
Commissioner Walker.
Aye.
Blankenship, Guera, Haas, Maurer, Bishop, Walker, all approved, none opposed. Motion carries.
Okay, very good. All the best. Best of luck there for the chess club. Okay, item eight on the agenda is a public hearing to consider approval of, of PD dash 213 R6 dash H, a live-work units or units at the Lost Creek Edition Lot 27 Block One, a zoning change request from Plan Development number 213 revision two historic to Plan Development 213 revision six historic, to attach a detailed site plan for five two-story 4,500 square foot lots, that being 3,000 square foot air-conditioned individual unit, live-work buildings, and a, and common parking area on 0.71 acres of property located at the northeast corner of South Capell Road and Heath Lane at the request of Chris Collins, being represented by Greg Franca, GPF Architects. We have staff presentation by Matt Steer. Matt?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. This property is located at the northeast corner of South Capell Road and Heath Lane. The subject property, bear with me here. There we go. Subject property was part of a rezoning in 2007 that established 25 town home lots to the east, and the concept plan for two offices on this lot, represented by the area in red. The applicant is proposing to construct five live-work units, five and one common area lot outlined in blue. This is consistent with the comprehensive master plan that calls for business uses on the ground floor and on-street parking as well as living above. Each unit is proposed to contain approximately 3,000 square feet of air-conditioned space, covered front porch, a two-car garage, and has the potential for a covered second-story porch. The interior floor plan will be finalized with the retention of a buyer. Approximately half or more... Approximately half or more of the ground floor will need to be dedicated to work, work area, while the upper floor will serve as a living area. There will be eight feet between the units, consisting of one feet on one side and seven feet side yard on the other. Uh, this is typical of a zero-lot line development. A private maintenance, access, utility, and drain easement is proposed between the units, and this will allow the lot owners to maintain the sides of their respective units as well as allow for access from the rear parking to the front of the units. The parking required for the development is, I based my calculations on if they had a thousand square feet of workings, working space on the first floor and then two units, or two parking spaces per unit in the garages. That, thirty-nine would be required, and that's at the most intense of one parking space per one seventy-five. So what they've provided is twelve on-street parking spaces, which are shared amongst the units. Then you have seven shared parking spaces on the common area lot in the rear. And then each lot will have three, or it'll have a two-car garage for, for the residents, and then three dedicated parking spaces behind each of the unit. Uh, the property is required to be replatted to create the five live-work lots and one common area lot for the shared parking. The on-street parking spaces along Capel Road will require a portion of the lot to be dedicated as a parking and sidewalk easement, which will be dedicated with the plat. And then the homeowners association will be required to, to, for the maintenance of the common area lot on the eastern portion. And draft HOA documents are required to be submitted to the city for review, and these will be needed at the, to be filed at the time of the plating. Reference to the tree survey and landscaping, they've got two of the existing, three trees on site are proposed to be removed, and tree mitigation comes to one thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars. They are proposing to save a seventeen-inch pecan at the northern end of the drive. Uh, they are proposing eighteen trees throughout the site, and these consist of alive oaks, lace bark alms, and shimaad oaks. And then they're proposing gravel between the units because it gets very shady between the lofty units, and that will provide an access path from the rear parking. And staff is recommending that additional detail be provided for the northernmost and the southernmost islands along Capel Road, and this is listed as a condition within staff's recommendation. The overall development is meeting the total area requirements of landscaping. That calls for thirty percent of the site to be landscaped. However, uh, the typical fifteen-foot front yard perimeter is being provided as a streetscaping. So what you have is, uh, five trees, you've got a seven-foot sidewalk, and then you've got the on-street parking. The eastern perimeter, uh, they're requesting a reduction from the required ten feet, uh, down to one feet. And this is to allow for them to, to construct a twenty-four-foot drive aisle for increased maneuverability on-site. They are also requesting a, an exception to the northern perimeter. Uh, you can see at the northwest corner of building five, it comes close to the five yards, or five-foot side yard set back here. So, um, but the shot, the lot is irregularly shaped, and therefore, staff is okay recommending approval of those exceptions. Um, they are proposing a eight-foot fence along the northern portion of the lot and then north and south along the eastern portion of the lot. On this eastern portion, they are technically required by ordinance to have a six-foot masonry wall. Staff is recommending a, an exception to that as they're providing two additional feet in height, which will better screen the, the neighborhood and will fit in with the, the look and feel we're trying to generate in the old cop, old-town area. Um, each, each of these units are very similar. There's three of the five units that will have upstairs balconies. The southernmost building has a wraparound porch because it has dual frontages. All of the buildings will be constructed of horizontal siding using traditional paint colors from the Sherwin-Williams palette. Um, a gabled roof will be provided along the front elevation, and the rear elevation will contain a hip roof. And, uh, the garage doors will be architectural insulated metal with window panels at the top. And the south, let's see here, south side elevations of each unit will have windows, and the north side will not have windows, except for the northernmost unit. And there are dormers to break up the great expanse on the roofs where visible. And staff is requesting more details on the doors and windows to ensure compliance with the Historic District Design Guidelines. So we sent out thirty notices to property owners within two hundred feet, and we received three in opposition within that area there. And then we sent out ninety-nine notices as a courtesy to property owners within eight hundred feet. And, uh, as of this afternoon, we received eight in opposition. So that's been updated since this presentation was made. But I'll go through those comments here. So within the, the two hundred feet area, um, the adjacent neighbor to the east wrote that he was concerned about the common parking facing his garden fence due to safety concerns because his house is at a lower elevation than this property. Also had concerns related to drainage. Because his is at a lower elevation, he was fearful that the, the drainage would impact his property, and then he was concerned about future noise issues with the, the common area parking lot. If they have an outdoor grill or some, some sort of dumpster, some sort of trash enclosure, that might be a source of a lot of noise. And so, um, to my knowledge, no dumpsters proposed, and they're, they're planning to bring their trash cans down to, down to Heath, similar to the other, uh, the other units. Uh, the other one was, uh, from the property owner, which is about four or five doors down across the road. And he said, uh, he, he believes, uh, building five should not be constructed, and that should be actually used as additional parking. So he had parking concerns. Then the property owner, the HOA of the old Capel Townhomes is, owns a, or they have a common area lot right where my cursor is there. And so I'll read briefly. I'll, I'll go through their, their email. And they, uh, sent this in for several different people. So I believe there were five plus the, five courtesy in, in the courtesy area, courtesy area plus the HOA lot, uh, that this would represent. It says, most recently, uh, the, the property at the corner of McNear and Capel Road was, was most recently approved for live-work units, and, uh, they have issues with parking from those. Uh, there's parking so close to their residential neighborhood. It was their biggest concern, as it is now with this recent request. And then, uh, their neighborhood, um, as they pointed out, is, is, goes in a U-pattern, off McNear, down Mobley Way, and Heath. So they adamantly oppose this zoning change request. They, they ask that providing for parking on this lot for three units might be okay. And they're very interested to learn more about how the parking is planned for these units. So, um, they do represent, uh, five different property owners as well as the HOA, uh, that common area lot. And then Don Walker, he's on the, on the call here, virtually. He, uh, had serious parking concerns. He was, he went, I had several conversations with him. He wanted it reduced to actually four units and the northernmost building constructed, or not constructed, and a parking lot constructed in that area. So the majority of people, like I said, were opposed just due to the existing live-work at McNear and, and Capel Road, their experience with that. And so, um, anyway, hopefully, we'll get to hear from some of them tonight. Let me go through. We are recommending, staff is recommending approval of the request, subject to the following PD conditions. One, that there may be additional comments during the building permit and detailed engineering review. Two, a replat will be required to subdivide the lots and to provide easements. Three, note on-site plan that the HOA shall be responsible for the maintenance of the common area lot, the landscape islands on Capel Road, and the perimeter fencing. And then submit draft HOA documents to the city attorney, for the city attorney review, and these shall be filed with the plat. All proposed signage shall comply with ordinance requirements. Add required provided parking data to the site data table. Add an overstory tree to the southernmost and northernmost landscape islands and include more detail on the plans for these areas. Extend the proposed fire lane mutual access easement to incorporate the western twenty-five-foot turning radius. And then, nine, revise all plans to reflect the correct property lines as depicted on the site plan. Ten, include more details on the elevations related to the doors and windows to ensure compliance with the Historic District Design Guidelines. Eleven, these are the PD conditions. It would be an exception be granted to allow an eight-foot wood fence in lieu of a six-foot brick wall on the eastern property line. And then twelve, an exception be granted to allow one-foot perimeter landscaping on the east property line and five-foot on the northern property line. That concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer, answer any questions. The applicant's architect and the applicant are in the audience as well.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Uh, I do have a couple of questions, and just, these are more, some clarifying things. All right, so the current, the current, um, use allowed, or I guess the previous application was for townhomes, right? That's what's currently allowed on that parcel?
No, the, what's currently allowed would be a professional office.
Oh, office, okay. And the size of that?
Um, I'm not absolutely sure, but it was on the first slide.
Yeah.
Let me go back here. Uh, or the second slide. So they had conceptual office. They had forty-one parking spaces back in the back here.
Okay.
And of course, we would, we would have them reconfigure some of this parking area here because it's conceptual.
Okay. Are the, the proposed units, they're three thousand square feet. Intensity-wise, are they akin to what the other work-live units are size-wise? And then also relative to the residential area behind?
Uh, yes, sir. In terms of size, they're similar to the ones at McNear and Capel Road. They're larger than the ones at, directly across the street, I believe. The applicant actually lives in one of the ones across the street, the Lost Creek live-work units. So density-wise, they do have the additional area in the, in the back that provides them, um, a little more leeway in terms of, of density. So they are equivalent to look and feel as the ones to the north.
So with regards to that back area and the comment about concerns on drainage, would that be addressed through the, the site development and the engineering plans?
Right, yeah. We wouldn't allow any additional drainage on, onto the adjacent property.
No runoff.
Yeah, and so this, this would probably improve the conditions of the adjacent property.
And in the other, there was a comment about dumpster, and there won't be a dumpster here. Folks would be taking their, rolling their trash cans down to the Heath Lane. How's that been working in the other?
Yeah, and, and I'm not, not absolutely sure, uh, you know, how they plan to do the trash, but that was my assumption, is they, they bring their, wheel their things down to Heath. They could wheel them to Capel Road, but I'm not absolutely sure. I'm seeing a nod, nod of no to Capel Road to Heath. So that, that'll be how they handle them.
Okay. And then, um, there's some issues going on with events over at the McNear, McNear location?
Yeah, so...
What's the frequency of that is?
So, so I, yeah, today was the, the first day I, I had heard about the events. And so, um, yeah, we'll definitely, we'll check that out if there's, uh... We do have a special events permit. If, say, someone wants to come in and hold a large, large event, then they'll come through our process. And, uh, that comes through our parks department.
Well, we don't know how often this is occurring? If it's business-related, or if it's...
Um, I'm not absolutely sure. I think it is business-related and not for the live component of the live-work.
Hmm. And then, I mean, how...
And this, we're, we're talking about the chiropractor...
Yeah, okay.
...on McNear and, and Capel Road, yeah. I'm not absolutely sure, but I did hear that they, they do have special events, and they do create congestion and parking nightmares up there. Although I believe there's no parking in front of, on McNear, directly in front of that. It's no parking allowed, as well as this one. There, no parking would be allowed along this section of, uh, which is Heath now. No parking would be allowed along here.
Okay.
So...
I mean, how, how different would it be from a, a function at someone's house in the neighborhood?
Right. Yeah. Uh, these, these people would be allowed to have parties just like any other residence would be allowed to have a party.
Okay. It seemed like I had one more. Sorry, guys. And... Maybe I didn't. Okay. I'll save it for later, maybe. All right. Any other questions by the commission of staff? Ed? This, this...
I just have a follow-up question on, on the chairman's drainage question. So will additional plans be submitted that, that address where, where the runoff will go? Is that the standard practice?
Yeah, so, so after the zoning's approved, uh, they come in with the full detailed engineering plans, and, and Cole and Mike here, um, I don't know if you wanted to say anything additional? Yeah?
Okay. Ed?
Yes, Matt. Outside of the doors and windows, as it relates to the Historic District Design Guidelines, does it meet all the, do they meet all the remaining guidelines?
Yes, sir. To, to my knowledge, they do, yes.
Okay.
Freddie?
Matt, I had a question regarding the calculations that you brought up. So you showed two numbers. So one was based on, I guess, one thousand square feet, and the other one was fifteen hundred square feet?
Right. Well, so, so, um, they do have fifteen hundred square feet shown for their first floor, right? And realistically, they're not going to utilize all of that area. So they would probably come in at a, about a thousand square feet. And I had spoken with the architect earlier, and that's, that's what he's projecting. Although, I think he based his calculations on the maximum, which was fifteen hundred square feet with the maximum intensity of medical office. And then he showed one for a professional office, which was a lot less, so...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I remembered my question. The ratio of work to live, is there a, a standard that we're shooting for in the Historic District?
Right, well, so in our, uh, building code, actually, we do require, if it's, if it is considered a live-work unit for no less than one-half of the first floor to be dedicated to work. And that's so people won't skirt around our requirements and just build a residence and call it live-work. So they actually have to have some workspace, fifty percent or more of the first floor.
So that's, there's the seven-fifty, so about twenty-five percent of the unit is the work?
Yeah, yes.
Is that consistent?
25% minimum.
Okay.
Minimum of the, you know, if, say, they get to the bare minimum of the, of the first floor, yeah. So, probably about 1,000, 1,000 square feet would be realistic.
Gotcha.
And I'll let the applicant speak to how they actually plan on, on, on using that, or how they anticipate it. I mean-
And, hang on a second. And then experience-wise, from our other work-live, there's work going on, and it's kind of aligning with the vision of the work-live?
Yeah, definitely across the street, for sure. We see, there's three live-work units there. Chris Collins, he lives in one, and, you know, he's, he's come in, he's talked, talked about all the pedestrian activity it's generating. It's, that's really why we're trying to get live-work units up, up this far north on Cappell Road, is to create some activity along there. So, so I think it is working. And in terms of parking, you know, I had spoken with Chris, and, and he said some, some of the time, they have people from the neighborhood actually utilizing the parking area rather than, you know, their guests, so.
Their function.
Yeah, so, so it's, it's a give and take, I'm sure.
Gotcha. Okay. And I, I did want to have one last question on the fence. So we're going from a masonry to potentially a wood, and so the life of a masonry fence is a little bit longer than a wood fence. What would be the requirement for maintenance? Is it just a visual?
Okay, yeah. We'll, we'll write that into the ordinance. We'll make sure it's, it's covered in their HOA documents, that the HOA will be responsible for it, and then we'll put it as a PD condition, that the HOA is responsible for the upkeep and maintenance of it. So if we see it dilapidated, we can point to that document and go to the HOA. And HOAs are really good.
Okay. All right. Any other, any other questions of staff by the commission? Jim, do you have any questions there? Uh-oh, you're on mute there.
Sorry, classic faux pas. Um, Matt, I was just curious, where, how are they gonna handle the, the trash disposal?
So, so it's anticipated, since they're metered off of Heath, that they would bring their, their trash down here, down in this area on trash days, off of Heath.
Okay.
Um, yeah, so, so each, each unit would be like a residence. So they'd have a recycle and a, and then a trash.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Okay. Does the applicant here present the case? And I'll, I'll need names and addresses for the, for the record, please.
So, my name is Chris Collins. I'm a licensed real estate agent. I live at 564 South Cappell Road, which is the southern corner of Heath and Cappell Road. I purchased the unit at the end of this year, end of last year, and moved my real estate office in, and it's been an awesome experience.
Greg?
Greg Franco, GPF Architects, 549 East Sandy Lake Road, Suite 100, Cappell, Texas. I'd like to address some of the comments here, if we can get right into it.
Sure.
First, the, the International Building Code has a section on live-work units there, Section 419. It's a maximum of 3,000 square foot conditioned area. The maximum area allowed for business is 1,500 square feet. And on top of that, the business can only operate on the first floor. So depending on your proportions, and here, we have, we're right at 1,500 feet of conditioned area, except on Unit 1, it's a little bit smaller because of the wraparound porch. With that, we'll get into parking. If it's a professional office, a real estate office, an accounting office, a lawyer's office, it's gonna be five spaces required per building, which is 25 spaces. Currently, we have 44 spaces. So we're, what, 80% overparked? Now, if we look at it as a doctor's office, the full 1,500 feet at 175 feet per person, or, or space, we come out with a, a building code requirement of 43 spaces. We have 44 spaces. And again, that's absolute worst case. Based on experience, I don't think we'll have five doctors in there. I think we'll have another real estate office, maybe an architect's office, and probably they won't take 1,500 feet each. Who knows? But until we plan it for that bar, we won't know. But worst case, we're, we're a space extra than what's required by code. Um, if, you know, we've done other projects where we've had a retail center, where we have had a restaurant, a commercial use, and we had to come in and get a two-parking-space variance. And if that was the case, we could limit, if we had four doctors, and we just say, fifth doctor, you can't, you can't purchase, and just limit that parking, if it got to that point. So there's ways to control that parking. Eight-foot fence, we're proposing that to be more community context. It will be still post, cedar, board and board. It's two feet higher than the code requirement. And it's, so any parking or lights will be blocked into anybody else's backyard because the boards overlap, there's not a gap between them. And I want to also get back on the, the parking. You know, this, this is a larger development than the Robertson development, the U2 units. So when that little development gets overparked, it's more noticeable.
Mm-hmm.
Here, we've got more units. If one unit's a little overparked for an event, well, it's gonna spread out a little bit, you're not gonna notice it. Plus, there's parking directly across the street at the Robertson building. He's, he doesn't open on Saturdays, so that can absorb some of the parking. Your development can absorb some of the parking. So there's more mass to absorb a single event. Trash, we talked about trash. I think that's it for me.
Okay. So, so, Mr. Franco, there's, seems to be the general notion that the site feels heavy. And I've heard several comments about, you know, remove building number five, you know, put parking there, variance, side yard variance there, the rear yard variance, so you can get more lot on there. How, how do you respond to that?
We match the development that most people have acknowledged they prefer. The two buildings that, down at McNear, it's an eight-foot between the buildings, were more generous than the Darling Homes, which are more dense on the property than we are. So I think this is the right in-between, and I think staff agree, because we did have them tighter before the DAC meeting, and we agreed to put less square footage and put more space between the buildings.
Okay.
And they will be a flagstone with gravel between, because, let's face it, nothing's gonna grow in there. And that's what we did on previous projects, and it's very successful.
There was a question that Matt was seeking further information on, on the two islands, on the north end and the south end of the, the on-street parking.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm just anticipating, they just wanna know what's, what the plan is?
Yeah, the, the parking is the same as McNear, where it's kinda half on city, half on, and a seven-foot sidewalk, just like before. And then the green space varies from six down to four feet, because of varying slope. At the corner, you know, the sidewalk to match south will need to make a S-turn or just widen, because the park, the walk directly across is right on the curb. So we need to kinda bend over. So we'll, rather than limit the concrete, let's face it, we just need a little more walking area as people make that transition. And we'll, we'll add the tree. We also want to put a street light in there. We don't want to conflict with a tree eventually covering it up. So we'll work with planning to get the lighting and the trees, and the size of the tree, maybe that's the issue. And the same on the north side, it's really just an S-turn that will make an easy transition for somebody, say, in a wheelchair can easily maneuver that.
That's what I was gonna allude to. I see some, it looks like ramping for ADA requirements.
I was also gonna talk about the grading. This site generally slopes up from Cappell Road, heading east, and then it starts to drop down. There's an existing drainage easement on the southeast corner. You can see that box right there where it's pointed. And there's an existing drainage structure. But the height of these floor plans are gonna be set by the sidewalk, which is set by the street, because it has to be accessible. So a lot of that dirt's gonna be coming off. And so the back end of the property, from what's there now, is gonna be three or four feet lower. And so it's flattening that site, and we have to, to make it accessible. But it's generally draining from the northwest to the southeast, and there's drains between each of the buildings going underground, tying to that structure. Plus, it's curved, so it's not like the water's running off. It's gonna hit the curb, run to that drain and, into Heath.
So by lowering the site to kinda match the street level, if you will-
Yes, sir.
-back in the far northeast segment of the property where the concern was on drainage, is that still, still gonna, I know that the requirement is you can't shed water onto an adjacent property, but where is that elevation? Is that gonna be-
We'll, we'll get that graded, but if we have to put a couple area drains amongst the trees, and then bring it down under the driveway, and that'll tie into with the drains between the buildings.
Okay.
So nothing will go on adjacent property.
Yeah. Any questions of the applicants? Any other questions there? Cindy?
So, so how does the size of these buildings and then the spacing between the buildings compare to the development where Mr. Collins is living right now?
So, it's interesting, because what started this was after I moved in to the 564 South Cappell, my office looks at the vacant lot. So I'm on the north end, and I'm looking at this lot, and I'm thinking of everything that if I had this to do over again, this is, would be different. So with that in mind, a couple of the things that I noticed in my unit that I live in, my neighbors and I, we all own a one-third vested interest in the land, so it's different. So we wanted to individually plat each property, and so that's the direction I felt like would be better. With my real estate experience and my mortgage loan officer experience, it just made more sense for financing that you're having an individually surveyed lot with a house on it, or a live-work on it. And so that kinda led to the idea of a little more space. My unit is 21 feet wide and 75 feet long, and I hate to say it, it feels like a mobile home sometimes. There's so much more can be done with the layout that makes it more user-friendly to an office if we have the extra width, which is six feet, in these that we're designing. After moving in, I don't know if you've ever built a house, and you move in and you go, "God, I wish I would've done that different." So this is my opportunity to do it different. What's interesting is, I'm planning on living in the furthest south building with the wraparound porch. That intention was, that's where we're gonna move to. So I'm gonna be a resident in a community that we're developing. Most of the guys were neighbors. We're sitting out talking, and so I understand some of the opposition to the parking. One of the comments that's, that was made by Matt earlier that was interesting is how many times on the weekends, the residences behind us are using our parking lot, and we're watching the kids and the grandkids go and grandparents come. So we're trying to adapt that friendly neighborhood feeling into the live-work space. So I know that there won't be five doctors, because there's gonna be one Realtor. The second thing that was really interesting that Matt touched on, I have a display in the front that has listings for sale, and we read landscape so people could stop, because we noticed the amount of pedestrian traffic in front. I have a water cooler that has bottled water in front of my office, and we give away about 10 cases of bottled water a week. Frustration with that, I also walk Cappell Road, I have to pick up the empty bottles that get left behind. But it's, it's been really neat to see the amount of foot traffic, to get to meet our neighbors, talk to them about what's going on with the market, you know, in my profession. The other thing that's really neat about this is it brings the community together. We have a lot of Realtors, we'll hear people honking, the, just run-on does their, run through the town. We help them set up a water station when they're doing that. So it's really the community engagement. We wanna get along with our neighbors, we wanna meet the neighborhood concerns. I don't think the concerns that are being brought up about the other, will take place where we're at. As for the trash, we all, in my neighborhood, we go to Heath, our water meters on Heath, we set our trash cans out, we take turns picking them up, whoever comes in first rolls them all back in. It's just a really neat feel.
Follow-on question there on the on-street parking. I don't know if this is Greg or you, but are there gonna be curb stops on the, for the parking spaces?
In the front, off of Cappell Road?
For curb stops?
Yes.
Okay. So the cars won't be overhanging across into the sidewalk, thereby reducing the effective width of the sidewalk?
Sidewalks, so we use that.
Okay. Freddie?
This may, I don't know if it's for staff or for you, but just out of curiosity, if, you know, someone who does this work-live and they opt to retire, or, you know, no longer do that business, what's, I guess, what's the fallback on that? I don't know-
I'm hoping they're calling the Realtor that sold it to them to sell it.
Yeah, they wouldn't be allowed to convert it to all-residential. They would not be allowed. So they need to maintain at least 50% of the first floor as workspace.
Can it be subleased? Let's say-
No.
Architect retires, doesn't wanna do it anymore.
No, because that becomes mixed, mixed-use rather than live-work. And then there's different fire separation requirements and different building codes that-
So then that architect can never retire, or have to leave. Okay. Okay. Any other questions of the applicant at this time? Jim, you have any questions of the applicant?
No, sir.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay. All right, this is a public hearing. I'm guessing some folks may wanna speak for or against the proposed application, as I scan the room. Okay. So, hoping everyone signed in in the back, so we have your name and address for the record. But we'll start with White, and maybe folks in the back? You wanna chime in here? Okay. All right, if I could get name and address for the record?
My name is Asher Albert. I am Texas Licensed Real Estate Agent, and I am a resident of 518 Heath Lane. Actually, that development surrounds my property from two sides, east and north, my, west of my home. So I had a few concerns that I just also sent. I think one, one of the biggest concern we just failed to address was the security and the safety. Because I was running some data on the Texas DPS website, just to see how many times it happens then that car just getting out of the parking and just hit the fence. And I think the wooden fence offers no protection. And that's our biggest concern, because any car can end up in my backyard. Kids play all the time there. And that's a, this is one of the biggest concern. And the other one is the privacy. And especially with the current plan, the porch on the second sto, story, I think that offers no view except my backyard and my windows. So these are two concerns that I do have, and that's why I just oppose that, that plan with the current plan. And I think the brick, the brick wall will be a better option, with some sort of barrier, which will, because there are nine parkings right there, which will back right to my fence, while parking and leaving and coming.
Okay. So for the record, are you for or against the proposed application?
Yeah, opposed.
You're opposed to it? Okay. Anything else?
No, that's-
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so-
You bet. Anybody else? Courage. We don't bite. Thank you for coming out.
I'm not public speaking, but-
It's okay.
So my name is-
So, my name is Kay Smith. I live at 526 Mobley Way in Old Capel Townhomes. And I'm not opposed to the idea of the concept. The number of units is a concern. And so, for your consideration, like, we've seen the two units that are on the end of our block. A couple of things that we've seen, one is like, depending on the vehicle that is parked on the, on the street parking, as you pull up to the stop sign, view can be totally blocked from oncoming traffic. If you're turning left, you cannot see traffic coming. So, the more you start building up those corners, depending on what vehicles, how close they are to the corner, the concern is like, cause for accidents and stuff, that you can't see people backing out of the on-street parking onto South Capel. It's become a busier road, so there's more traffic. One of the other things was not knowing, and if there's no restrictions or anything, and I don't know how you would impose this, but what kind of businesses go in. For example, the chiropractor, which you would think would not be a big deal. I mean, like, how many people can he work on at one time? But, they hold events where there's multiple people that come in. I don't actually see them using their, the spaces behind their garages parking. They use our overflow into the neighborhood. And while we did for access for like, fire truck or something like that at the entrance, we had gotten that excluded, no parking on-street there. So, now it's backed into our neighborhood. And the concept of the live-work being like in the Old Town area, it's a little different in our residential neighborhood, because there is like a large parking lot. There is more parking available for businesses in that area, as opposed to our small, again, U-shaped area where you start having all these units at both entrances. It's a small turnaround. It's not like we can just choose to come and go from the opposite end of the, you know, of the block or something. Both of them are going to have congestion. And you don't really know who's gonna go in there. So, that was why our concern was with the number of units and having more off-street, just thinking of the, the traffic flow, the view, you know, being able to prevent accidents and stuff from happening, that people have sightlines and stuff. So, thank you.
Thank you. I have a question of you.
Okay, yes?
So, you mentioned that with the, with no on-street parking in the other side closer to where the buildings, parking goes into the neighborhood?
Yeah, so it was at the entrance, we've, like, there's, just because of our, we have a large entryway sign. And so, if you had on-street parking, it, it could limit access for getting through there. So, there is parking back behind the sign in the neighborhood.
Oh, okay.
So, there's, there's on-street parking there. It's just, it's set back from the, like, you can't park up to the stop sign or whatever. It's parked.
Right, right. And so, what I'm, my question is, from your experience, the frequency of cars parking in the neighborhood going to those businesses, if there is an issue?
Well, so, the chiropractor, there's been several events, like, that, and it would be, and hopefully, one of my other neighbors will speak more to that, that they've seen. But, there's, there's been, like, all weekend long, you know, and multiple weekends, which I think one of the neighbors had talked to him and he said, "Only like two a year." Well, he'd already met that, like, early on in the year. And so, I don't know if it's training or what it is, but, you know, thinking that, well, that was a small business, you know. You know, one of our concerns before, and I'm not sure if that was always two units planned or if they had decreased that, trying to not have too many businesses, that we've just seen several events of that coming in and taking up like any of our overflow parking. So...
So, what would you say have been the number of events?
I'm, I'm not sure. And there...
Is it occurring weekly, monthly?
I'm, I'm hoping one of my other neighbors will speak to that.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much, though.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
Find that other neighbor. She's 16, so give her a long time.
No problem, no problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Teddy Hamilton, 518 Mobley Way. Hate to make this about the chiropractor, but that's the only one that's open. I do wanna say that when you go up to the end of our street and you try to execute a left-hand turn, you cannot see oncoming traffic. And it's, we're gonna have a bad accident there, because people do not drive 30 miles an hour on South Capel. It's very dangerous. And now, when you can't see it, makes it even more dangerous to make a left-hand turn. Going back to the chiropractor, he's had three events that are two weekends in a row. Cars, and I have pictures from, cars from different states, Wyoming, California, New Jersey. These are kids that have come in about 30. They carry their little chiropractic tables on their backs. This starts Friday afternoon, 5 o'clock. It goes to 10 at night. Then, all day Saturday and all day Sunday. They leave at 5:00 PM. He's using his garage as part of the training. So, the garage doors are up. There are, again, tables for chiropractor to use all over the parking area in the back. So, that's our complaint. It's, and during the weekends, that's when we have families come in and there's no place for our families to park. We have a pool. We have people over. There's no place to park. So...
Ma'am, how did you, you said how many events you've experienced?
I think there've been three two-weekend events.
Okay.
And I'd be happy to provide pictures of the states that are represented.
That's important evidence. We'll need that. Can't have these out-of-staters. Thank you.
He's not training Texans, is my point, I guess.
Can I, ma'am?
Yes.
Can I, so I get clarification. Your comment about coming out of the, sorry, and turning left on Capel Road, is that on Heath?
As you're coming out of McNear and you're executing a left-hand turn going towards Old Town.
So, there's a large SUV parked there or something, a big type car that causes?
Doesn't take a big car at all.
So, any, any car parked right at that spot closest to McNear?
Right.
Makes it hard to see.
And they're doing a lot of construction still for the photo office. So, there are vans parked there. And I mean, there's just no way to see it. I would, I would love for y'all to come. You've really got to get out into the road to see what's coming from the right-hand side.
Hmm, okay.
Very dangerous. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello. I'm Debbie Elliott. I live at 542 Mobley Way in the Old Capel Townhomes as well. And, yes, like my other neighbors, we're opposed to it primarily because of the density and the parking. I'm a pretty long-term, one of the first in that development residence. And I've walked, you know, from my house down to the farmer's market on a regular basis, drive it every day. And, of course, we have seen a big uptick in the traffic on South Capel. And I'm not opposed to the work-live. I know the front angled parking is probably gonna be inevitable. But, as the others spoke of, we're gonna see the same thing at the stop sign when you're sitting at Heath, turning onto South Capel, as we have at McNear. And it doesn't take a big car, but there's often on the McNear side where there is a business operating, there will be pickups. And they sit up high. You have to just slowly inch out until you're practically the middle of the road before you can see around. And they do not, cars do not go 30 miles an hour. This isn't like a block down at Main Street where there's a lot of, you know, foot traffic and shoppers and, you know, people going to the restaurants down there. This is not the same area. And people aren't gonna be going slow and watching the foot traffic like they are down at the Main Street area. So, you know, that's a concern, whether it's gonna be, you know, considered now or in the future, if there're gonna be continual, you know, developments with South Capel angled parking. And if I were a patron at one of these, you know, new businesses and trying to back out of one of those where you have a big truck next to you, I mean, that's, you know, that's an accident waiting to happen, because right now, people aren't, aren't really that watchful. We are, we, because we drive it every day and we see it every day. So, that's, that's really, you know, our main issue is the parking situation. I can't imagine, what did they design, 27 parking spaces behind the, the five units? I walked that. I can't imagine that many cars crowded back there. How in the world is there gonna be room to maneuver around there? I mean, I guess that's the problem of whoever buys them. But, it just seems like if you would take out, I would prefer making it a three-unit, but if you even took out the one and made that parking, and that might be another entrance to the back, you could have the entrance from South Capel to the parking, as well as the entrance to the parking from Heath. And there's two ways in and out of that business parking. That would just be my suggestion.
Okay.
Any questions for me?
I do.
Okay.
From your experience, have you ever witnessed or an accident on South Capel Road from the situation you described?
No, I've never witnessed it.
But, it's still the inching out and...
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I've, I've inched out and put on my brakes real fast when I've discovered someone's whizzing by. That, that happens on a regular basis, that's for sure.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Hey, they covered it all.
Ditto.
You got, you got their back by "they covered it all." Okay. Is there anybody virtually who would like to speak for, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, great. Go over to your virtual.
Okay, we'll go, we'll come back. Okay. Is there anybody virtually who'd like to speak for or against the proposed application?
Yes. Yes, I would. This is Don Walker.
Don, okay. Mr. Walker, if I can get your name and address for the record, please?
Don Walker, 522 Mobley Way Court. And unfortunately, I have a little bit of feedback, but we'll deal with that.
Okay. Sir, go ahead. We got you. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I am opposed to this for the different reasons than the previous people. I believe that the, I believe in this concept of Old Town being a thriving, bustling place. And we will have pedestrians coming by. And if these units, some of the assumptions about these units, will be drawing those pedestrians, we hope, I'm sure that the business owners hope that, if it were a, a business that didn't have customers, they would be, may as well be in the house operating. I oppose this, because I think that it devalues our neighborhood. You have pushed a boundary line right up against the window of a lady's house. And how much have you caused that house to devalue? This is, the one at McNear is a prototype for what you're about to do here. And this Dottie Pearson's house has a wall one foot from her windows. And it seems unconscionable that that was allowed. And here, we're doing it again. I think we initially went along with the McNear area because of ignorance on our part, the residents' part. We didn't oppose that, as I recall. I certainly didn't. But, experience has taught us a lesson. And now, we'd like to protect the other end of our neighborhood. The, the way I see the parking spaces counted, I think, is flawed by a great deal. And the way that the businesses are, well, let's go over the parking for a moment. We assume that of this number of parking spaces we have, assume that the resident is going to stay home and is her spouse all day long during work. So, you see that there are three spaces blocking the garage. So, once those three spaces fill up, the spouse can't leave and pick up the kids. So, it's assuming you leave a space out within, first of all, you've got 10 spaces of those 40-something are actually owner's spaces filled with cars and storage. So, you have to take away 10 spaces from what the, from the 39 that says up there. And then, you have to leave five spaces out so the spouse can leave going inch out between the cars that might be parked back there. That's, brings you down to, what, 24 spaces. And then, if it's really going to be a doctor's office, a doctor works from room to room with, with a patient in the office. And he has at least one assistant. He doesn't do his secretarial work in answering the phone in between patients. The doctor's efficient. My wife is a doctor. We know how it works. You get at least two patients in. You have one waiting in the waiting room. That's three parking slots there. And you've got an assistant to park that needs to park. So, that's four parking spots. You need four parking spots for clients to come visit. And then, and then you re-look at the parking spots and it's not quite what you had assumed. I believe that the unit five needs to go away, or one of the units. And more realistic parking accommodated, one. And two, I think that we have insulted the owner of the adjacent property. You've given each unit a nice eight-foot or six-foot section between the units, but nothing to the adjacent neighborhood homeowner. And that's not being a good neighbor. And it's also a very ugly eyesore. And if you can imagine, the, as the chiropractor was mentioned earlier, he uses his backyard, which, by the way, that area of two units up there accounts for 12 parking spaces in the back. Three and six cutting the garage and three to block him in. And then, the next one is three and three more. That's 12 parking spaces. So, realistically, he has, they have the four in the front. They really don't have those parking spaces there, in my opinion. And I think that I'd like to see our way of counting parking spaces, separating between what we anticipate the businesses to have. In this case, it was anticipated by Matt to be a doctor's office, where real-life doctor's offices have patients and they have assistants, et cetera. And, and also, people usually have spouses that have to come and go. So, all of that just seems that this needs to be a smaller development and reinstate a 10-foot line, or at least an eight-foot line to the adjacent house. So, that's, those are my comments. I hope you guys are still there. I don't see you. But...
We, we can certainly hear you. Thank you very much for your comments there.
Okay. Thank you for letting me do that.
You bet. Is there anybody else out there virtually who'd like to speak for or against the proposed application? Okay. We'll come back in, in-house here. We'll come back to the house. If I could get your name and address for the record, please?
Kristy Green, 351 South State Highway 121, bypass unit 411. And I would like to speak in favor of this project. As we have looked at the development for several years in the city, I have served as liaison on the economic development... liaison on the Economic Development Committee when we used to have one of those. And we looked a lot at different repurposing of property in the city, mixed-use things that might need to be changed over time, lots of different ideas and conversations about that over the years. And that's probably going at least 10 years back. And so, when we're looking at the highest and best use of property, and developers are trying to come in and figure projects out like this, it's kind of like a Jenga game sometimes. And so, when we're looking at these things and having people talk about how to fit things on and density and those kinds of things, it's difficult. And as we've even seen developing Old Town and adding things, when Darling came in and did those projects, it, it was a lot of conversation about that also, and what, what would look best, and how were things going to look? And one of the very first closings over there was one of my clients, and we really had to stand there and look and convince him, what am I going to be looking at? And what is that going to look like? And so, it's very difficult at times for people to really visualize what that looks like, especially when we're looking at drawings, because not everybody can functionally figure out what that looks like when it comes. So, I think when we're talking about Old Town and getting that development continuing to go north in our town and what that really looks like, I think this looks and conforms to what we already have and really helps us to extend that because we want to continue that look of Old Town. It also gives our city really good use of the tax base and the commercial section because you've got solving one problem of how are we going to fit more residential places in our town because we don't have a lot of that capacity anymore. For the years and years I've been here, they keep saying Capel is built out, and yet, we keep finding places to shove more things in. And so, this is just another one of those types of projects, which we're really not shoving it in. It's kind of one of the bigger pieces of property left in town right now. And so, we're solving a residential issue for some people, as well as giving the city some consistent tax base with the commercial base because there's not a homestead associated with that. So, we've got some things there that are also going to help out our city and what that revenue looks like. So, just in the way we've looked at the development and how to move forward with the project, this is the best way we've been able to figure out how to get something on here that's a functional use, that solves a couple of problems for a lot of different people, and still looks great in our town. So, I'm in favor of the project.
Thank you very much.
Hold on, I forgot. You usually have questions.
Does the commission have any questions of the resi... Thank you very much. I don't. Thank you, though. Anybody else? Okay. Seeing none? Sorry, Matt?
Eddie, going back to the written statements that I received, I did receive one late today that I failed to mention.
Okay.
And it did, it mentioned the visibility problems that they're having at McNear and Capel Road. And so, I've, I had failed to mention that during, and so, I figured I'd, I'd bring that up now. Thank you.
Okay. At least, this is going to lead me to a question of staff, and it's probably going to be for Mike. But hang on a second, Mike. We'll, we'll get here in a second. So, anybody else, public hearing, speak for or against? Yes, sir?
My name is Randall Engel. I live at 554 Village Green Drive in Capel. I'm for the proposed development, but I happened to be driving by there the last few days, and I love the condos that these ladies live in. I actually looked at one, thinking about purchasing one myself. And coming out, is there a vision issue? Yes. But if you go one street up to Cooper Street, one street north, there's hedges you can't see out of there either. So, and I live on Village Green Drive, Rain Tree Village, Rain Tree subdivision. The streets are parked on so much there that you couldn't get a fire truck down it if you had to. I appreciate the fact of the parking, what they're saying, but I pulled in there today, and there were probably 20 empty parking spots, but there were four vans of a business that were all parked in there too, that weren't doing business there. It must be one of the homeowners. So, I understand their issue because parking, I have three teenage daughters that park at my house. I make them park in the driveway, and we move vehicles every day because I don't trust the, the street. So, I appreciate what they're saying, but I think it's an issue all over Capel. And the other issue that our, our adjacent neighbor behind us that are speaking about this project, how many of you live in a neighborhood that if you're in your upstairs game room, you see in the neighbor's backyard? I sell houses in Capel every day. That's what, just the way it is. They're so close together. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, last call. Anybody else? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. I do have some questions of staff. Mike, we can start with you. So, site visibility and corner clearance, site triangles, kind of theme here. Any, are you receiving any issues or has, has staff seen...
To my, to my knowledge, we have not received complaints at this intersection, but I did take some notes down that we will go back and review the intersection at McNear and the intersection here at this development too, just to make sure that there are no site visibility issues that are, are not in conformance with our ordinance.
Parking-wise, if there is a, an owner of a work-live and they have vans and they park those there, is that allowable?
It is, it is allowable. Now, there is an option that we have done because we received a similar complaint on South, I call it South, South Capel, near our service center in Burns. We've received complaints in that area, and we, we have, at times, been able to put compact car only. It's not enforceable, but it's, it's a resident enforced-type mechanism to allow smaller vehicles to park in those end-cap spaces.
Have you, any success on the effectiveness?
I haven't heard any additional complaints. So, either it's effective or people just got used to it and are careful when they're pulling out.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Any questions of, of the commission, of, of Mr. Garza? Freddie?
I do have one question, I guess, in regards to backend parking. Was that a consideration for this too, or...
It has not been a consideration yet. We, we haven't tried that in town. We know it's pop, it's becoming more and more popular in areas of urban development and downtown areas of backend parking. It's, it's an option. It's probably something we need to look more into rather than, and, and we can do that, certainly do that.
Well, but what would be the cost of conversion, though?
Well, that, I mean, that's, that's it.
It'd be the driving factor.
It would be, exactly. For, you know, for this development, it's, it's probably, I don't say it's doable, but, but...
Yeah. I'd, I'd be a little concerned, there's not enough turnover...
Right.
...for this, other than chiropractic events.
Right.
That's a different issue here. Okay. Any other questions of Mr. Garza? Cindy?
So, back on the, you know, turning left, the, the visibility issue, I wonder, just tossing out, if we eliminated that northernmost parking space and moved it, I don't know where we would move it, or just eliminate it, if that would help the visibility?
It would, it would help the visibility, and that's going to be a discussion that we would have to have regarding parking quantities. We, again, like in Old Town, we have similar situations that, where we have visibility issues. And again, Old Town is a little bit different because there is more pedestrian traffic, there is slower-moving traffic. This is posted 30 miles an hour, but as they say, it's possible that vehicles go above the 30 mile an hour, and so, but eliminating that corner traffic or parking space would help.
I see an unintended consequence of doing that, though. That might have a negative effect.
Yep.
I like that idea of a small, designating small car space. That, that might help control some things. But you brought up another question I had of Mike, and that is, the, the comment about parking, so there's no parking probably along Heath from the driveway to the, to Capel Road, thereby potentially creating folks parking further into the neighborhood, occupying neighborhood space, et cetera. Have you all received any complaints on that in other, in other areas where that's a problem? And is a solution to sign it, or, I don't know?
Right. So, we typically, in areas like this where their side yard is, it's not posted no parking, and we've allowed it, we typically get complaints about people parking on the side yards, and then we go back, create an ordinance, and create no parking along those side yards because people do park there. But yes, it would, it would increase moving further to the east and parking into the neighborhood.
Okay.
Yeah, right now, it's signed.
It's, it is signed?
Okay. All right. Any other question of Ed?
Yes, Mike, a question on the visibility triangle for McNear. I'm, I'm assuming that that would pass, and I don't know if this is possible or not, but can you generally explain, like, what the requirement would be in terms of, you know, and without getting so technical?
Right. So, visibility, visibility triangle is based off posted speed limit and stopping site distance. And so, off the, I don't know, off the top of my head, I have to go back into our ordinance, what our stopping site distance is for 30 mile an hour road, and then the visibility. It's usually 15 feet back at, at a 45-degree angle, and then it, it kind of projects out 250 feet or something like that. Don't quote me on that, I don't know off the top of my head. But that's, that's typically how we, we determine what the site visibility is.
So, addressing, doing it in that method, that would probably wipe out some of those parking spots.
It's possible. Depending on where the...
Where the stop bar is.
Stop bar is, right.
So, what about slowing down the speed of Capel Road in the district?
On a local collector, minimum speed is...
35 now posted?
It's third, I think it's 30.
It's 30?
I think it's 30.
Yeah. That'd be, yeah.
All minimum.
Yeah. That'd be a toughie. Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay. Staff. Matt? All right. I think it is, well, let me ask you this. Are there, what are the requirements on the types of uses allowable in the live-work?
So, we would not allow a restaurant as a business-type use. And, you know, what, what we're parking it for is the most intense, which is medical office. But you could, you could see medical office, retail use, professional office, a service-type That concludes my remarks.
Left me hanging there for a second, Mike. I, I, are there, are there limitations on what can be done? Is the work, the work that's done in the work part, is that contained within the unit as opposed to potentially stretching out into the garage?
Right. Well, so, I think the building code does, does say a minimum of one-half of your first floor of air-conditioned space, but I don't think it limits it from spilling over to the garage. We would write into their HOA documents that they're required to have two garage parking spaces. We would make sure that's, that's within their HOA covenants.
And, and what about hours of operation?
I don't know that we, we've limited it in the past, but, but we could, you know, if, if the applicant was willing to, you know? I mean, he's going to be a resident there as well, so I don't think he would want to have businesses open past a certain time.
Because, the reason I'm, I'm asking these, these kinds of questions is, I, I think it's a, I, I don't know if that was the intended vision of the work-live, that you have things going on out of the garage with a, with folks coming in. I don't know what's going on there, but to me, it's kind of a disservice to what's going on, particularly to the neighborhood where it's occurring. And how, how, how can that be avoided in the proposed application, number one? And then, how could it be fixed in the existing application, number two?
Well, right, yeah. Today was the first day that I'd heard about them doing work out of the, the garage. So, I think, I think the applicant's probably willing to write that into his, his regulations. We could definitely put a condition on it. If, if the applicant's willing, I'm saying nod, yes, that they would not spill over into the garage, for sure, or the non-conditioned space.
Okay.
You know, they're, of course, they're going to have signage out on the non-conditioned spa, or, you know, out on their porch and, and things of that nature, but I don't think they would have a waiting area out there.
Okay. And thank you to whoever brought up the, the loss of parking because of moving cars, you know, the cars blocking the, the garage. That's a great comment. I had thought about it earlier, but I forgot to ask it, but thank you to whoever that was. I, I mean, I can, that's, to me, that's a legitimate operational kind of thing, right? If, if parking is going to, but that's assuming we're having medical office or the kinds of uses. And what if it's all real estate agents or architects with low-volume activity that don't retire? The, then, then maybe that's a different story, but if you've got cars parked there and you've got, you know, some issues from the home front and folks need to get out, you're, you know, playing musical cars. End of my question, comment.
Okay, yeah. So, so that's a really good point, and we think that they would figure that out logistically as time goes on. Mr. Frank brought up a good point in, in terms of the, this being five units as opposed to just two. This has a little more flexibility in, you know, one being a super, or maybe a medical office, which is the most intense of the uses that, for the workspace, and then one could be a super light, light user and not need any of the spaces. So, they kind of spill over and help each other out. I think that was a really good comment that, that Mr. Frank had made.
Okay. I, I will, I will be coming back to the applicant, so hang on there. Seemed like I had one more. Hang on a second here. So, we could write in limitations on type of use, like, for example, even though we know that restaurants won't work, restaurants are not allowed, I don't know if that needs to be spelled out again, or if there cannot be any more than X number of, like, a high generator, like a medical or dental or whatever?
Yes. At your recommendation, we, we would include that as a PD condition.
I guess the, the real question would be, I mean, that could be perceived as arbitrary and maybe even capricious, but I mean, they, I, I guess the applicant could argue to the council, well, wait a minute, you know, why, you can't control what we're going to do. We want to do live-work, that's the vision, and et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah. Within, within the PD ordinance, you can regulate uses. And so, we'll definitely, we'll include in there that no restaurant uses would be allowed. And then, you know, any other additional provisions that you guys see fit.
Okay. And then, the last question for you, with regards to density, from, from your professional opinion, do you believe that, as proposed, that's within the vision of, of downtown Capel, historic Capel and the work-live? Is it too dense?
No, not in my opinion. As you drive down the street, it's going to look very similar to the live-work. It's actually larger houses than, than what's south of there. And then, as you get further north, I believe they're, they're the same width, are, are they virtually the same width?
They're six feet wider.
These are six feet wider?
The ones further north.
The ones further north are, are six feet wider, so, yeah. I, I think this will fit in. So, it's, it's kind of a transition between the ones from the north, which are wider, to the ones to the south, which are even more narrow.
Thank you, Matt. Okay. I, I have a question of the applicant, applicants, either one. So, so, Mr. Frank, I heard you say you had some comments to respond to some of the...
Yeah, we're talking about the, talking about the overflow into the garage. And, again, we've adopted the 2018 International Building Code, specifically says 1,500 feet max that can be used for business. If it's, more is being used, I think somebody has to enforce it.
And so, 1,500 square feet would include the garage?
No, that's business use.
That's just business only?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, the...
So...
The rules are in place, it just has to be enforced.
Okay. Up to 1,500?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, would, as the applicant, would you be willing to write in any limitations to, or any additional language to prevent garage space being used as work and, and, I guess, other, time of operation and/or limitations on, I, I don't know what's, what's actually going on in this, with these training or whatever, but would you be willing to write in certain kinds of limitations to kind of control some unintended consequences? control some unintended consequences?
For sure. Like I said, I lived there. I sleep across from Robinson Pools. And normally, I know if I've overslept because I hear 18-wheelers firing up. I hear the reverse alarms going off, starting about 6:30 in the morning. And when I checked into it, there's already operation codes in the city ordinances about when that can be going on. Like I said, I'm going to be living there as well. I want to get along with my neighbors. The visibility, understanding and hearing of that today, definitely there's solutions to that. Whether it's to make a larger island and on that corner of Heath and South Capel Road to take up more space, the compact car. I mean, we want to get along with our neighbors. And so, because I live there. I'm not an out-of-town developer trying to come in and make a quick buck and get out of town.
You'd commented that ideally, it might be all real estate agents or maybe an architect, but not all doctor's offices. Would you be willing to write in limitations on the high generator?
I don't know how we could do that, but my suggestion would be to possibly look at our deed restriction or HOA documents to limit the number of, you know, and then define what a doctor's office is. I don't want, I don't want somebody with oxygen bottles and, you know, doing surgery in my neighborhood. Yeah, I just, I understand where we're going with that.
The high, the, I guess, the more intense parking turnover type uses are dental, doctor, those kind of things, where you have appointments and you have turnover. And typically, it's 10 and, between 10 and 2 during the weekday. But this is kind of something else going on on the weekend, but-
So I would ask Matt, is, or-
Well, I guess you're the applicant. I mean, would you, would you put a limitation that no more than one unit may be either high turnover type land use or medical, dental, or something like that?
Yeah, I mean, I guess we would address that either, y'all would just have to help and coach me through that, what that looks like.
Okay. I mean, no question boutique, boutique office, boutique operations for dental, that's kind of, you know, that's kind of what might have been envisioned. But there is turnover involved with those kind of things, and that's what kind of adds to those things. And how about the small parking? Just to kind of try to have a local area cure for site visibility, would you be opposed to?
No.
Okay. Okay. I don't, I don't think I have any other questions, but Cindy?
On the neighbor's comments-
He's the architect and he's the one that's helping with the drawing, so I'm asking him about the parking island.
Okay, okay, Cindy, hold on to your question there, okay? Okay.
You can see that diagonal line, that's the visibility triangle. But it does, goes to the property line, but there's a car right there. So that first place could be designated a compact car, which you can, depending on the vehicle you're in.
No, that's the right, that's the right turn. It's kind of the left turn that's the issue, so. I'm sorry, yeah, yes, you're right, you're right. Okay.
That car right there, maybe the second one. Odd question, right? That's, is the visibility issue?
Right, right, okay.
On the Capel Road, it's hard to see the southbound traffic.
I don't know why I'm thinking it's the left turn. You're inching out because you're looking left.
You need to go that way.
Yeah, that's it, okay. Yeah. So what is it, between 18 inches and a certain number of feet that you want to have generally kind of clear for the view? Okay. Well, if that, if that works for y'all, that-
No, go ahead, just speak into the mic, just so they can hear you on the remote end.
Okay.
Oh, thank you, sir. Sorry. Okay.
And one other comment, that, one other comment made was the parking and maneuverability in the back. That's the identical size of any shopping center in the city.
Yeah, I kind of felt that the-
18, 24, 18, so.
Okay, Cindy?
What about the comment that people on the second floor, looking out their back window, will look into the existing houses, the backyards of the houses? Is there anything we can do about that? Like frost the glass or something?
It's, it's hard to say what's going to be going on in that back use when we come in to get in the building permit. Each one of these buildings is going to have to be permitted. And I just don't know. Once again, I sell real estate all over North Texas and have an office in Denver, Colorado. And it's just one of the consequences of progress.
Can you put the site plan back up? Is there any chance for any screening? Well, there's some, there's trees in the back, right?
Trees on the north.
Oh, there's single trees. Ultimately, when those mature, that's probably going to offer some screening right there. But then the part on the southern end, but-
And there's, say, the Cowboy Development, Frisco, they require frosted glass, looking from a conditioned space into the neighbor's yard. Here, possibly do some type of screening with, say, a 50% net opening to where you can kind of see light, but you really can't see. That's a possible solution, a decorative screen on the east facing patio?
Like a screen, screen, like a-
Yeah, where you can still see south and north and your view to the east is very limited. You know, that's one option. Say it has a 50% visibility.
Someone's pointing all the, is that a lot of windows along the back there?
No, so this is open, open space. So they've got a second floor patio area. But yeah, what he's-
So they say a lattice work across that work.
Greg, talk into the mic, there.
Something, the concept of a lattice work, but maybe a little denser.
So applicant, would you be opposed to that?
No, in fact, one of the things we had looked at were screening the back porches on the second floor. So it just goes right in hand with what we're trying to accomplish.
Matt?
Yeah, definitely, we can have them write that into their HOA documents and, you know, tell us how they're going to do it.
Any other questions or comments for the applicant?
Chairman Haas, I had just a quick question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jim. I couldn't think of where the voice was coming from, I'm sorry. Forgot about you out there.
Sorry about that.
Fire away, Jim.
This may be either for Mr. Frank or for Matt. But I was, I'd like to address that one gentleman's point about, I know that, Mr. Frank, when you were presenting, you were talking about the number of spaces totaling 44, even with the high use of the different premises, that that would be adequate. But how do you address the gentleman's point about the fact that 10 of the spaces, almost 25% total of the 44, would be garaged and would not be available to the public for parking? Does the code just count them nonetheless?
As a owner-occupied business, we know at least one of those spaces, the person will be working the business. And if the spouse has to leave, or, let's face it, they're going to, we have a 16-foot door and then there's a man door next to it. So those spaces on the rear could be adjusted a little bit so that they could always back out.
No, sir, I'm sorry, that wasn't my, he was pointing out that of the total number of spaces being counted, 10 of them are actually garage spaces. So they wouldn't, they wouldn't be available to the public. And my question was, does the code allow you to go ahead and count spaces that would not be publicly available within the total number of spaces being offered to the public?
I can answer that there, Jim. Those are required for the residential component of the, of the use. So what Greg was saying was, was that's kind of a, it's a dual purpose because they're allowed for the residential portion, but also they would be used for the work portion. You know, the person living there would actually use one of those spaces. So it's kind of helps in two different ways. Those garage spaces are very important.
Okay, but those do, Matt, those do count toward the total number of spaces that you're counting as spaces that would otherwise be required for the property and the size of the buildings?
Yes, sir, yeah, that's what we had done in our, in our parking calculations right here.
Right, but, but 10 of those spaces aren't publicly available, right? And if you had a two-car, like if you had a husband and wife living there and they each had their own car and those were garage, then those wouldn't be publicly available to any customers, clients of the businesses, right?
Correct.
But they're still allowed to be counted, I mean, I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure, but they're still allowed to be counted toward the total, even though they're not publicly available?
That's what we're saying right here, is two per unit garage parking. This is for the residential unit, so we're separating those out. And this is 1,000 square feet per 175 square feet, which gets 29 total parking spaces. So 29 plus 10 gets 39.
Yes, sir.
That's, that's for the total required in residential, two private parking spaces plus the public parking spaces.
Okay, so on a live-work basis then, or a live-work structure, you?
You separate, the way we had done our analysis is we separated out the two, even though they're going to be, one of the, at least one of the lives, or the residential spaces is actually going to help out in the workspace.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Jim, any other questions there?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. Any other questions to the applicant by the commission? Thank you very much. Okay. So I'm going to go ahead and start, since I was the one asking all the questions here. And I sincerely appreciate the feedback, both pro and con, on the application. I guess, first of all, I do feel that the live-work is a unique type of land use that has been beneficial, or is more beneficial for a growing historic district, trying to get some activity down there. And I think it has been successful in the past. I think what's happening are some unintended consequences that I'll have a comment on after this. But I feel generally that the live-work is something that really we should continue to promote. I feel like this land use is less intense than what was previously approved, number one, office to residential. I am okay with the number of units as proposed. I applaud the applicant for allowing some additional conditions. I'll try to list those out if I got my notes put together correctly. And I just think that generally, this thing could work, could be beneficial to the area, particularly since the applicant's going to be living there, it's going to be your neighbor. So I think there's going to be an extra set of eyes, making sure that this thing doesn't turn south. Even though it'll be sold off, other neighbor, other folks will be moved in there. I would suspect that the applicant, that the current applicant would still have, have a voice on that to the neighbors there. But I would like to add, the, and the applicant is an agreement, that we add some additional language regarding the small parking, the small vehicle parking on the ends, just to help increase the effectiveness of the site visibility angle. The, that the add-in, the no use of garage space for work, because that's garage space. The, he was, you think the applicant was willing to add in the type, a limitation on the type of use? I think like up, no, up to one, but I'll let staff and the applicant work that out on the type of use, the high generator parking type use.
Yeah, we're going to need a little more guidance on that.
No more than one of a high, of a dentist-
Of a, of a use that's, that requires one parking space per 175.
Yes, that's, and are you okay with that? I see him nodding yes, he acknowledges, okay. And then the screening lattice, lattice along the back to help reduce the sight, sight lines to the neighbors. The drainage is going to be addressed in the site.
Wait, on that lattice, I mean, is that too specific? Do we need to make it more general?
It's like screening.
A screen.
Like a screen, yeah, like a screen, screen, screen.
Say with a percent opening.
With a percent opening. With a grid or a decorative. Okay. But thank you for considering that. I think the drainage will be addressed during the site plan, the engineering review of the plans so as to not negatively impact the neighbors. The comment about the overlap, the use in the parking adjacent to the garage, that's very valid. I would want to make sure that there's, that that doesn't get violated and therefore the effective number of spaces are reduced because of the owners parking in the, in the spaces next to the garage. So I don't know how we manage that, but just a comment there. I guess all in all, though, I do feel that it's, it's in line with the vision of what the historic district intended. And so I could support it and thank you for the additional conditions to be added to the case or to the recommendation. That's my initial comments. Any other comments from the commission, Freddie?
One thing I was going to add, like Sid, I believe it's, to me, the density's a little too much for the property. But I, you know, I understand, you know, the configuration. One thing I do ask, maybe consider eliminating that last parking space on the south. Again, if you're looking at low-density usage, because like Mike had mentioned, you really can't enforce that low compact signage on those lots. But if, again, because it appears you have maybe, I don't know, four extra parking spaces, maybe eliminating that one space. Because I do understand the resident's concern with safety. I think maybe that may alleviate that concern with them.
If you eliminate that, what is it, is it hardscape, is it?
Well, that's, yeah. That's, that I don't-
I'm just asking. Any other comments by the commission?
That's a good question. Does that end up to be like on Cooper now, a overgrown hedge at some point?
How?
If you eliminate the parking space, depending on what kind of landscaping, to your point, is there, is that, does that end up to be, like on the, you referenced Cooper where it becomes overgrown? And becomes a visibility issue?
Possible, but there's the requirements on site visibility, can't have, you can't have anything between 18 inches and, was it four feet, six feet? Four feet, that's the, when you're sitting in a car, the driver's eye and the sight clearance, so.
Right.
As a suggestion, could maybe we move one of the handicap parking spaces where the open space for the handicap is in that spot? And that would be less used as a handicap spot?
I, well-
Because you have to have that open, I forgot how many feet it is, adjacent to the van. It has to be open and level.
I would think that with the visibility-
Just trying to problem solve this. With the visibility requirement being less than four feet, if we were to use it as an island that is landscaped, my mailbox is currently located in an island on the north west corner of Heath, where the visibility is. And we have the prairie grass and our mailbox. And so if it was to be an island like that, that would be landscaped with low-growing shrubs or jasmine or whatever that would stay below that four-foot requirement, we won't plant any Indian hawthorns again. But we'll keep it something low so that it could be seen over and just take that last parking space that is right at the edge of the visibility triangle and just extend the curb and create a landscaped area.
So the unintended consequence might be we're losing a parking spot.
But because we're, because we've conceded to reduce the high-traffic uses, such as doctor's office, we've now lowered our traffic count, our parking spot count, which then also frees up the garage question and giving up one in the front.
I'm fine, I'm good with that. Matt?
All right, someone had brought up the handicap space there. And I know handicap spaces were a problem at the chiropractic office because, you know, they had- handicap spaces were a problem at the chiropractic office, because, you know, they had two handicap spaces out in front of one of the businesses, and then two out in front of the southern business. And so we, we actually, we, we helped them move one of those handicap spaces to the rear. So what, what I'm thinking is, maybe we have a, you know, I think, was it Sue that mentioned the handicap space, and then an island, and then a handicap space here? And that might alleviate that visibility, because you typically don't have people parking in those handicap spaces.
So...
But here's, here's Greg to call me out.
We've got to have the two spaces, and the most efficient is space, access aisle space, which is the cross-edge.
Right.
But if you separate them, then you have two access aisles.
Right, we don't, right, you'll lose the spot.
I would suggest just move the curb nine feet over, redo the corner, but mainly it's a seasonal color bed.
Sure.
With nice seasonal flowers, that's going to look great in front of a real estate office.
Okay, I'm not going to debate, thank you.
Well, the, the, I was thinking that, you know, for the work part, you know, if you move the handicap down, then you have no spaces in front of this work-live, and so that might be a negative. So I like the idea of the, of the landscape, thank you for that, along with the, no more than one of the 175, so, thank you. Okay. All right. Any other, any other comments? Jim, any comments from you, sir?
No, sir, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay. So I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion. I'm going to make a motion that we approve, we approve PD-213R6-H live-work, the Lost Creek Edition Lot 27 Block 1, with the conditions as presented, with the additional requirements of the landscape parking spot on the end. No more than one unit shall be a high-parking generator. The garage may not be used as workspace, that must remain as garage use. And the screen, with that language there, the cutoff screen or whatever, to help reduce sightline impacts to neighboring properties. I think I got them all. So that, we have a motion by Commissioner Haas with conditions as presented, plus the amendments. Is there a second?
Let me pause for a second. Do we need to define what the high use, you, the high use would be as part of that?
So we said it's the high, high parking generator, the 175 parking requirement, but we could add the language of...
Yeah, to my knowledge, it's, it's medical office is one to 175.
It's medical, dental.
Medical and dental, yeah.
Those kinds of things.
Yeah, and that's, and vet, yep. And veterinarian?
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I do think some greater specificity there would be...
We'll have those land uses, the applicant agreed to, I'm sorry, Jim, fire away?
I was just going to say, I, I think that's got a good point. I do think some greater specificity there would be a good idea, just for future reference for anyone who wants to buy or sell one of those units.
Okay. Medical, dental, vet, those, those type uses. Chiropractic falls under...
That's medical.
Medical, yeah, okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner Haas with condition, additional conditions as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Maher. Any final thoughts, deliberation by this commission? Okay. Cam, would you call the roll, please?
Please say "I" in I's, I call your name, Chairman Haas.
Aye.
Commissioner Blagenship.
Aye.
Commissioner Guera.
Aye.
Commissioner Maurer.
Aye.
Commissioner Bishop.
Aye.
Commissioner Walker.
Aye.
Blagenship, Guera, Haas, Maurer, Bishop, Walker, all approved, none opposed, motion carries.
Okay. So thank you to everyone who provided comment and feedback on this. I think in the end here, hopefully we get an even better product, which I think we will continue to, to get. I do want to add that I would like staff to follow up on what's going on, that existing condition there, up the street there, whatever is causing this parking, to take a look at that. Now, I don't know how we can do, if there's a cease and desist or what, but to investigate what's going on, and I guess we have to kind of put some bookends on it, does it violate the integrity of the, of what the intent was on the work-live?
Well, it violates the, the building code, is, number one, if they're using the garage, garage space, so that, that'll be the first, first course of action.
Okay. So hopefully, taking a look at that might help other parking concerns there, and so thank you to staff for site visibility comments, thank you, comments, good comments across the board, so thank you very much. All righty. As we move on here, item nine on the agenda is update on council, city council items. We did review those in pre-session. Mary Peron Boswell covered those. That puts us there at item 10 on adjournment, but I'll, let me leave staff with final comment. Matt, is there anything else that we missed? Anything else to cover?
No.
Okay. So then with item 10 is adjournment, the time is 8:55, and I'll adjourn this meeting.
See y'all next time, thank you.
Jim, thanks very much, we'll see you, hopefully in person next go-around.
Yes, sir, thank y'all.
We'll see you, take care.